Oh, you're doing all right. My bill is almost, that's about twenty dollars now.
President Fletcher?
Here.
Director Hunt?
Here.
President Collett?
Here.
Vice President Duncan?
Here.
All right, at this time, some of you might have heard, I think, before Jim, like, send an email out that Claude Powers, which was a plumbite employee of the district and also a member of the board, passed away a week and a half ago.
The month of July two thousand and thirteen.
Was it bad or bad?
Wow.
Always bad, so, like, the powers, a little silence for that. Okay, I think that...
Could I say something, sir?
Absolutely.
Uh, when, after Claude was off the board, we dedicated a water tank to him. It's called Powers Tank, and so if you see it, you know why it was changed from, what's the number on it? The guys keep referring to it to Eve Tank.
Noneley.
Yeah, on Noneley, yeah. I keep trying to get them to say it's a Powers Tank, but anyhow, it has a dedicated plaque and everything else. We had a meeting there to dedicate the plaque to him, with him and his wife in attendance.
Well, besides the director, he also worked for PID.
Yeah, he was a field operation man.
Yeah.
I would say, uh, uh, John Dickin. Uh, while the family know that we appreciate all the service to the district and, uh, we're further with them. So, item number two is approval of the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
I check it out.
There are several things I would like to...
Your questions?
Questions about, yeah.
The plus.
I got one.
The better.
I marked the pages and so forth, so. Um, on page, iPad page fifteen...
Why don't you tell me what items they are, B, C, D, E, and the whole?
Well, wait a minute, is this a new agenda item? Staff report, July two thirteen, that's not in the...
A staff report is part of the consent calendar.
Yeah, okay, it's a staff report.
But which seat, what letter?
Okay, so...
What letter?
B.
B, okay.
Oh, you want that up there, oh, okay. That's page fifteen, at the bottom.
So, we'll get that, we'll get that, and then anything else?
Yeah, there's several, I'd just soon go and turn, I didn't, I did this late this afternoon, so I marked the pages, but I didn't write down how many. There's several that I came up with questions.
Is there something in the minutes?
No, it's on this Clark Road Corporation Yard project.
Uh, B.
That's also B, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, the metal building has been completed and rough framing and interior walls office have been completed and framing. The question I have is you walk in there, at the very top, on this side, the ceiling isn't there. In other words, it's been rounded off, and I don't think, I don't remember us ever agreeing to an open ceiling part of that building.
The shop or the...
The office side, this side up here, the T part.
This is above the, uh, what do they call that, just like the, uh, lunchroom or the open...
See, it's gonna be the employee training room, and it's where they get together at the beginning of the day.
Is the ceiling gonna be finished?
No.
Was that a part of the original plan?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, I just thought it was on, because it works out to be...
I think it's insulated, correct?
Yes.
The ceiling's insulated, yeah. In the whole building.
Did you close the agenda?
So, I need to move, I need to move it under the desk.
Okay. I had questions, real quick, I can't even read the page number here. It's compares, let's see, capital improvement projects, July two thirteen, it'd be page nineteen.
It locked up, so, go ahead, I'll see if I can handle it without bringing it up.
Oh.
It's the paragraph one, right?
No, no, it's not the draft, it's up above, it's the line, line one across the top.
Okay.
Says funding year, and, um, there's two projects in, in process. Jensen Circle, twelve hundred foot, we've completed forty percent so far, thirty-five percent, but it was in budget year, funding year eleven and twelve, and I wondered why the delay in it, it says in progress.
Jensen Court was a, I believe, a fire department, um, co-project, and so what we had done was we jumped in and did the cross-country mainline, um, when it wasn't winter of that year, and then we haven't gotten back to wrap the project up, that's why it's still hanging on.
Okay, and then the court yard, of course, it says funding year oh nine and ten, and I don't, forty-five, forty-seven percent in progress. I don't think I need to say anything more, I'll just get myself in trouble. Um, then on page twenty-three, it's the leak, monthly leak history, nineteen ninety-one to present. I just, well, the question there was the recent Pence Road, just, that just happened, that's not on this chart, I assume?
Pearson Road?
Pardon?
Pearson Road?
Um, yeah, it was on...
Pearson.
On Pearson, yeah, I'm sorry, not Pence, Pearson.
No, it wouldn't be on here, 'cause those are through July, I believe.
Just through July.
All right, and that's that one.
While we're here, let me ask, I have a question about the, one about the installment of the, um, the hydrants. What number was that? Yeah, uh, page twenty-one, I'd never noticed it before, why do we have half hydrants?
Half hydrants?
Yeah, isn't this, hydrants on the left?
On the scale.
That's just a scale.
Oh, that's just a scale?
That's just a scale.
Oh, really?
It would never be a number that's one and a half.
Okay, I, okay, I see now, and mine, I couldn't see why it was below the line, but now I see one isn't at the line, okay.
Or the top, I was just...
Yeah, four, yeah, four is at the top.
It's just Excel builds that automatically.
Oh, okay, I was, I thought, well, we don't do half a hydrant.
It's not that easy to make it only show a one.
We're using Ken Lox program.
Even do, oh, okay.
There's the problem.
But Excel uses that.
Okay, that answers my question.
Um, twenty-nine is a water treatment plant, uh, production, annual production comparison, monthly max, minimum and average, and I was just curious, because everything for this, through this year, or was it two, if I got, yeah, two thousand and thirteen, we're down, all, all the bars are less than the previous years, previ, the year before, it was one year it was less. And the Paradise permit comparison, it looks like we're gonna do better than last year.
No, we're not.
We're not?
We raised the price.
Well, I mean financially, I'm not...
Money-wise, but not permit-wise.
Not permit-wise.
Well, no, if we raise the price and we're, and we're getting the same, we're doing the same, then some, then we have less permits.
We didn't raise the price.
We didn't?
You lowered the annual permit price, and then you combined boating and parking on the daily.
I thought we lo, I thought, I thought we raised it on the kayak people who were out of, out of the area.
And then we just, we rescinded that.
No, we didn't rescind that.
Not rescinded, but changed it, then we changed it.
We just, I was gonna call Kevin today, and I forgot to ask what, what the increase was, 'cause I know we increased, I know that, why are they complaining?
We complain, we combined the daily boating and parking into one.
Correct.
So, there was a two-dollar savings, I think, for that.
Right.
For boaters. Parking didn't change, and then your annual boating and parking got combined, and those two actually declined, when you add them together, it was less than it was the previous year.
Really? I, okay, the one, look, for a little, one short year, then.
And we also reduced, anyone that lives in the district got five dollars off their annual parking.
Back to what it was, yeah, right.
So, it was more of a rate redo.
Yeah, it was the Lake Committee that brought that, yeah.
Right, but then the Lake Committee re...
Well, it was amazing, you know, Ken was in favor of lowering rates, I gotta give him credit for that.
I don't think Ken was in favor of lowering rates.
No, he was in favor of raising them.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I misplaced that.
That's okay, I can understand why you would think that.
Yeah, I thought we raised them for people who don't live in Paradise.
I did talk to Dave, I was up there about a week and a half ago, and he said, uh, two weeks ago, actually, tonight, and, uh, he said that they're having this really consistent people.
Well, the heat, probably...
There's consistent money going in, I was watching about four or five kayakers that night, and, uh, and there were a few deep fish, and so, we...
Well, somewhere in here, it said, it said that the heat, it was, attendance was down a little bit.
I, I don't know, all I saw was the dollars figures.
Right.
It looks like we're gonna top last year, which topped, just barely got a little better than the year before, so I'm, I'm very pleased to see the revenue in there, and then the people using the lake and, and enjoying it, the recreation. So, then I go to, have a note, unaccounted water, twelve-month cumulative time intervals, and page thirty-two, and we're down to less, we're six point three nine percent, and percentages always get me, it, it's about four hundred and eighty acre feet, if you go down to the five hundred, and, just trying to estimate, and we sell our water for approximately nine hundred dollars an acre feet, or have I got that wrong?
I don't remember the number specifically.
It was approximately, because that's what we charge.
That's what we charge Del Oro, wasn't it?
Yeah, so, it runs, it, at four hundred and eighty acre feet at nine hundred dollars, there's still a four, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar lack of income out, out of the, we need to fix the pipes.
Four hundred and two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand, yeah. I know we differ an opinion.
Right.
The standard in the industry, below ten percent is excellent, you're never gonna get to zero.
No, I don't think we'll get to zero either, but I think, but I think we can do better.
That includes processed water right now, too, doesn't it?
No, that's accounted for. And then, I notice...
It used to be higher than twenty-five, didn't it? As I remember, it was up to thirty-something at one time.
Percent, oh, yeah, the four ninety-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Yeah, well, um...
Work in progress.
Yeah, then under page thirty-four, where we sell water, I noticed we haven't sold lime saddle, just a fraction, you know, what we used to, and we're still selling to the pines and Megalia, and I just want, later on, we're gonna be in closed session about our relationship with Del Oro, and I think it's important to keep those figures in mind. And then the other page, thirty-five, shows that we're getting more from service fees, or are we, yeah, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, July of thirteen, five-ten, against two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight-sixty-eight, ninety-nine, for the actual water, so, where we've raised our fees have been in service fees mostly, and it's showing up now, or has shown up, and, let's see.
But we're not getting more in service, I mean, we're getting, yeah, we, oh, we are, yeah, service, it's a consumption, it's because of the higher price of water, consumption's gone down.
On the consent calendar, it has Nielsen Estate subdivision, I need that to be taken off for a separate vote, I, I need to abstain whenever the vote is taken on that, because of a potential conflict of interest.
But I have to take it off, just note it in your vote.
It does move, yeah.
Just note it in your vote.
Just note it in my vote, okay. And, no more tabs, so that's it.
I would, uh, there was something about the US Bank credit card, what, oh, the question was, what happens if we don't pay it monthly?
And there's, uh, there's fees and interest, so, like, late fees, seventy-five dollars a month, and the interest is the stated interest of whatever's...
Okay, okay, in case somebody made a mistake, I was wondering what, what it was gonna be.
The payment terms are forty-five days upon...
We, we have a card that if we don't use it six times a month, there's a six-dollar fee for not using it.
And there's rebates associated with the Cal card, based on volume.
That, that's coming up later on in the...
This is the consent calendar.
That's on this, yeah, that's down here in the credit card approval.
It's on the consent calendar.
It's on the consent part.
I see it's on the consent.
It is in the consent, yeah.
Do you have a question about it? Now's the time.
Do you have a question?
Well, it's a state, it's just using another analogy, like buying tires through the state account, or any other area where you can get that kind of volume, so it's, to my way of thinking, the only way to go.
Yeah, it's gonna make our lives easier, for sure.
It works better with the new accounting program software.
It's just, it's more secure than...
Easier to track.
It's more secure than what we have, we tried to use TriCounties, and it's just, it just seems like it's an accounting nightmare, we've tried to work it out, but it's just not working the way we thought it was, and the, the Cal card's gonna be more secure, and it's gonna give us the same flexibility of what we are trying to achieve through the TriCounties card.
And you can do, you can do adjustments from what I read electronically on it?
Right, so you can give somebody a transaction limit, uh, real time, so they call up and say, I need to buy something for two thousand dollars, their limit's five hundred dollars, you can give them that two thousand dollar limit increase online through an administrative procedure.
Then tomorrow, knock it back down to...
Right, and everything has, you can, you can limit whatever somebody wants to purchase, you can say that this person cannot purchase X, Y, and Z in that category, you can do all kinds of limitations, and, uh, and it still has to go through the same procedures that any other purchase would have to go through.
How would they be able to stop that at the store?
Um, just based on when they swipe the card, if the transaction came up.
Really?
Yeah, they deny the transaction.
So, you can say no alcohol?
You could.
Yeah, that's district policy, so it'll probably get put on there.
You can say no travel.
Oh, no travel, no alcohol.
Entertainment expenses.
No fun.
I know where that happened, not, not on Cal card like this, but it all came in in a big bill, and when it got up there, they rung it in, you know, kicked it out, so they had to rewrite the whole bill, some very unhappy waitresses, I might add. Because there was no way you could put alcohol on it, you know, it wasn't me, let me state that, it wasn't me, but I was there observing.
So, it looks like we had no amendments to the, the consent calendar, uh, since...
I did wanna, oh, I had a question on the bench, did Zamans, did they pay for that or did we?
They paid for it.
Oh, and what did it cost, about?
Do you remember, Jim?
We billed it three hundred and fifty dollars.
Three fifty, labor?
That's what we, that's what we billed.
And then what, and they provided the material?
They provided, they provided a plaque, they paid for the plaque, it was delivered here, and then we installed it.
What about the material?
We were gonna rebuild anyway, right?
We, the materials were included in the three fifty.
Oh, okay, I'm just curious, in case I wanna, if somebody asked me about it, I wanna know, be able to tell them.
Each bench looks very different, that was, it was, they're all unique, and there was custom work involved, so I would, I'd be, I would be careful to say that that's a predictable price.
Right, I would just be able to say that they paid for it, and so therefore, be prepared to pay for it if you wanna have your bench fixed.
Pick a bench and, and we'll evaluate it, is probably a better procedure for that, yeah.
And the next bench, I think we need to evaluate a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
And we get last.
Oh, you think the three fifty wasn't enough?
Enough said.
Enough said, okay.
Thank you, that came out looking very nice.
It did, very nice.
Because of the custom work, and the level of detail we put into it.
Yeah, that's important, that it looks good.
I'm sure his family appreciates that, so, um, so since we had no amendments to the consent calendar, is there anybody from the public that had anything they wanted to say on that? Okay?
I wanna say one, something about Nielsen, the point, sub, estate subdivision, uh, the reason I wanted to abstain from that, it, I actually didn't realize what was happening, I sold seed to it to, for erosion control, and it's a native seed, to Anderson and Company, which I hadn't seen listed, but in, to this agenda, they're listed, so, on that part of the consent, consent calendar, I don't think I should, I would abstain myself, I think, from voting on Nielsen, I think that's a legitimate reason to abstain, so.
Okay.
So, how do you wanna handle that, you wanna...
When he votes, he'll...
Is that an amendment, or you just wanna handle it in the minutes that he's abstaining from that portion of the consent?
From that portion of the consent calendar, I think that'd be, okay, so, all in favor of approving the consent calendar with the abstention of Director Kellogg, and that was item...
C. I know, D, C, C, yeah.
That was C, okay, and item C, say aye.
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 Okay, passes, five-zero.
Thank you.
Okay, public participation, individuals be given opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda, although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker, opportunity for the public comment on agenda items we provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address this about something not on the agenda? Our one public member, thank you, Lauren.
Good call.
Okay, and committee reports and presentations, board oral reports regarding their representation on commissions and committees, the first one is Butte County Special District Association Director Hunt.
Well, that's easy, we had other director participation there also, that was held on, I believe it was Tuesday, July thirtieth, and, um, it was the annual picnic meeting, it was done very nicely by our staff, getting that put together, they, uh, they had to, they, they had to move forward quickly on that and make things happen, um, everybody I talked to there sure seemed to like the, uh, the venue, food was good from that caterer in Chico, thank you very much for getting that, speaker was a rice farmer, uh, from a rice farmer family anyhow, and that's what he does, uh, by the name of Ryan Shore, he's running for the California State Assembly in District Number Three, bright young fellow, educated, knows a lot about water, and how it affects his rice farming, and rice farming takes a lot of water.
Yes, it does.
Um, but anyhow, he was the, he was the guest speaker there, um, the weather really cooperated, it was absolutely perfect, it wasn't hot, it wasn't uncomfortable, we had a good time, and beautiful surroundings of the Paradise Lake and the Paradise picnic area, and, and site there was a nice showpiece for us to showcase for the Butte County Special District Association, and, uh, other than that, no business was handled.
I think we were in violation of our bylaws.
Because we didn't handle business?
Because we didn't have, have a business.
I, I kept waiting for it to be called.
I asked Steve about it, and he says, oh, I'm not gonna bother, he says, last time they didn't like it, so I'm not gonna bother, but I know we were...
Oh, I didn't know why that...
We're in violation of our bylaws by not having a regular meeting there.
That should be, uh, front page below the fold, though.
[laughing]
Thank you, that's all I have to report.
I don't think there's a penalty for being in violation of your bylaws.
Thank you, Director Hunt.
I will, I wanna comment, the food wasn't as good as PID does, or as good as the one up in Sterling City, but it wasn't bad, it was, it was edible.
We had no bees.
No bees, that was lucky, but that wasn't their fault, we were lucky.
Maybe the bees didn't like the food.
That could be, there, there was some little teeny ones.
I'd like to comment, too, I, the, the, the county resource conservation district manager was there with her husband, and, uh, the guy, gals from Cemetery District were there, and that's who I sat with, and they had no complaints about the food, Larry.
You sat right next to me.
I'm just spoiled, because PID does it so much better. I'm giving a back, I'm giving it in the backdoor call.
This is, this is my report presentation.
I know, how did we get up?
We're, we're not here to discuss this.
It's a shocker, it's a shocker that we got off on what happened with the food.
I'm giving a back...
That's really shocking.
To our compliment to our staff.
Okay, we're gonna go on to, to two, thank you, Director Hunt, and comments from our other directors, uh, Butte Local Agency Formation, Butte Laffco, Director Duncan.
That's a long report, we didn't meet.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, Finance Committee, number three, is Finance Committee, Directors Hunt and Duncan, and, uh...
Ken can't have, can't say anything, 'cause he wasn't there.
Yeah, tell him, tell him what we did.
Yeah, tell him what we did.
You're the chairperson on that?
Uh, the chairperson, and he, and Ken was sick.
And the only attendee from the directors.
And we're glad that he didn't come in, 'cause we would've all got sick, too, but anyway, we met and, uh, looked at the, uh, budget thing, and I came up with four suggestions, of which I think three were put into there, but one turned out to be a little bit hard to do, oh, two, two didn't make it, one of, the ones that didn't make it was, I wanted a, a staff report, uh, showing what our, um, employment, uh, what's the term?
Numbers.
Numbers, yeah, that, how many people we've employed through the years, to show that we, even though our, our business is getting bigger and everything, and we're still not, we're still being good and not over-employing, right, and then the other reason, thing is I wanted to show the public exactly how they get their water, you know, from the rain and from the, from the well, and how, what has to happen to it.
I put that in one. I put a graph.
Oh, you wanted a graph.
Graph, yeah.
You didn't text.
You didn't text, but they didn't, yeah, they didn't text, but I wanted a graph so that people could see.
No pictures?
No pictures.
You didn't pull the pictures together.
And then, uh, the other two that I said was, I wanted a list of our accomplishments in the last ten years, which they did put in there, and what was the other one? Oh, talking about the fact that part of our, very little of our water comes from wells, 'cause I want that in there, because I'm sure somebody will say, well, why, if you need water, why don't you drill a well? We've already gone down that avenue, so, that's my report.
Thank you very much, Director Duncan, uh, I'm sorry to hear that Director Hunt was sick for that, uh...
Is there a sick pay for that?
No, you, well, you pay us.
Okay.
In favor, say no.
[laughing]
And then, the fourth item was Water Conservation Committee, Directors Crowell and Fletcher, Director Fletcher is the chairperson on that, you have a report?
Thank you, yes, I think it was our third meeting, and I feel very comfortable that we're coming along, and the Conservation Committee is going to be doing some excellent things for our district in the conservation area, the better use and wise use of water. One of the things we're doing is we're still planning and putting together a program of work, and Jim broke down our brainstorming, and then we worked on that, and it's gonna be a work in progress, this program of work, what we're doing, but a couple of the big highlights I'll share with you, we're gonna be putting on some different seminars, we're bringing in different people on the wise use of water, and sprinklers and timing and all of that other activity, and then the other one that is exciting, someone brought it up, and we've been following up on it, and George has been working with it, it's very good detail, he and I have been on it, and we're getting ready to, we're gonna have a subcommittee tear into the landscaping out here by our landscape architect, and this will become a demonstration area, right out here, and I think Karen, which I haven't had a chance to talk to yet, suggested maybe some type of a small demonstration garden up here in the corner, and we are just in the process, and we're gonna be taking it apart, looking at drought-resistant plants, and better watering systems, and all of the above, and, so I'm real excited about what we're doing, I don't know, would you like that on that?
I'd say we also did a little talk about a, I will say, one, I was late to the meeting because of, uh, my workday schedule, but, um, I didn't get here in time, and they also talked about maybe a community garden, too.
Yep.
Um, in the plot of land that we have, kinda between the house.
That's what I was talking about up here.
Yeah, yeah, so...
It'd be, it'd be in this corner, we'll have something, if, George, George seems to be very supportive of that type of activity, and I'm sure our landscape architect would be very willing to work with groups, because he, they're generally that type of people, and we'll be bringing in outside groups involved with it, and we've got a couple of the real leading gardeners in our community that are willing to help serve on that, so it's a lot of exciting things happening, so when people drive up Clark Road looking in here, they're going to see some things happening that they can look, and then the nice thing about it, too, uh, we haven't talked about it, but we'll, we have, but we haven't, you know, there's this serpentine area, you get up here, around this area over here.
Sidewalks.
We, we may wind up helping with the area out to the road, plus this community garden and demonstration area.
Along the wall.
Along the wall, and people can drive in there, because the gate will be down here, so anytime anybody wants to look at it, it'll be open twenty-four-sevens, park up here.
Down here, yes.
Yeah, up here, and the gate will keep it mounted, so there's some exciting things going on. What would you say George? You've been there.
No, it's been good.
Jim? Jim's our clerk and he's got his ears on all the time.
Jim's done an excellent job at taking all our wonderful ideas and kind of compacting them into five categories. I think we had total four or five categories with little sub items in there rather than 25 random ideas, which we didn't really have a range. So Jim did an excellent job of doing that. I wanted to thank him for doing that.
But of course, the other part of it too, I didn't want to forget to say, all of the committee members are excited about it. But that's the secret. They're excited about it and willing to spend their time and energy helping make whatever we do happen.
Are there plants that are real pretty that can exist without water?
Here's what we're gonna... I'm gonna do a... Before we get to thing, I'm gonna be at Butte College and they have every plant in the world that they got on a cue card. Because they have to memorize 150 of them. So before we meet, I'm gonna take the plants off of the plan and I'll have a description of what the plant does.
Larry, I know specifically there's that beautiful southwest tumbleweed.
Scotch broom.
Scotch broom.
Scotch broom, that's a good one. We don't need anyone with Scotch broom.
Yes, we love Scotch broom, yeah.
Very limited use of water too.
You don't even have to have dirt for that one to grow.
You try to put it out when it's on fire. Then it takes lots of...
Director Kellogg?
I wanted to point out one thing. We're gonna have a Botanical Garden Meeting. And any of your gardeners are more than welcome to come on August the 27th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the Community Baptist Church on Skyway up in Megalia. But part of the botanical garden is water, you know, native plants and low water use plants. They're supposed to be part of the garden when we finally get it designed. So you guys are aware, we're gonna have two shots at it here.
There's a lot of those already picked up. You've already picked out a lot of those plants too? That are identified, a lot of those plants that are drought resistant.
Yeah, where are native plants and so forth? There's a native plant nursery in Chico. Hopefully we'll get them involved. But I'm aware of the native grasses that once you get them established, don't need watering, just like the ones out in the yard. Eventually they don't need watering, the native plants. But to get them established, they still need help.
My building at State Stop, I never do any outside watering. Owned it for 35 years. So anything that's alive has made it on its own. Go over there, look at that.
Well, you've probably got native grasses because they're all over this town and people don't know what they are.
What's happened is when I used to give my wife flowers, you know, potted flowers. And when they died, she'd dump them out around the tree.
And they grow.
And they grow. And we get tulips and all, and the irises coming up every year. No water.
With what Director Kellogg was saying, Georgiana, would you send an email to Ward for the Botanical Garden Meeting? Letting him know of that so that we can have him there. The other thing that we came up with, and I don't know if we've talked about it, was we talked about having maybe Chico State do a, or maybe Butte College, doing like a little PSA type announcement for the Water Conservation Committee and Wise Watering. Maybe we can get it to play up at the theater and some other spots. But we're gonna have them work on it as maybe, I think Director Flesher was gonna look into it once school got going again and see if they can use it as a project.
I'll look at it before our next meeting.
Yeah, and then they can look at it as a project and get credits for it and produce something for us maybe in the same breath, so.
Have you seen that ad that Shasta does?
I was gonna say.
On asphalt?
Yeah, well, there's one for water too.
They do, well, they do asphalt. They water this asphalt and water it and it doesn't grow. So don't water your asphalt. And on the way here today, I saw a guy watering his rocks.
Anticipation they might grow into something bigger. But the Shasta one, the one that Larry's talking about, if you watch KRCR, there is a very good PSA commercial that they had made up there. And I don't know who made that for them, but that's a real good one. It shows a little girl, she walks up and the sprinklers hitting her in the car. The sprinklers hit in the car and the windshield, you know, when they drive in the driveway, which you see a lot of that going. I noticed it more in Chico because they don't seem to be too water wise down there, but.
Right. What were other subject? You have a question, Adasta. That Botanical Garden Meeting that Kellogg was talking about. If I attend that as a member of the public, is there any problem with him being there?
No, there's only two of you.
No, no. And it's not a recognized committee.
Yeah, it's not a PI meeting.
Yeah, it's another...
Not a PI meeting.
It's an ad hoc committee.
It's an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, and we don't have any authority there either.
No, I don't.
So it's all, it's a rec board that's running it.
They had a couple of people, including Mike Creak, that say that.
See, this is why the notice comes out under the rec boards headlines and everything. They basically control it. All I'm doing there is advising, that's all.
Yeah, advisory and public attention.
And letting you guys know what happens there, if there's support needed, so.
I may or may not be able to attend it, I'm not sure.
Thank you everybody for your reports. We're gonna go on to item number five, General Managers Report. And George, tell us what's happening.
I had some things to add to my written report. First, I want to start off again commending the distribution and treatment staff on the event that you saw the pictures of Saturday night, 2:00 AM. Not only did we get a fast response from the treatment plant, they were able to get the standby person involved and Keith involved and put their heads together and got the leak slowed down. Couldn't even find it because it was the middle of the night and it was out or down in the bushes somewhere. They weren't sure. So they slowed the leak down until they got daylight.
How did they do that? How did they slow it down?
They were lucky. They're smart. They followed the system around, figured out where it would be, kind of isolated where it might be and then slowed, shut those valves down most of the way.
Oh, good.
So very good response. Great guys willing to show up, spend most of their Sunday there helping out, getting it taken care of. This picture up here is the leak. And what you're seeing is actually after that flap was bent down, because they bent it down just to keep the dirt from going in there as they were making the repair. It was coming out like this, pointed right at the bank. 100 PSI, 18 inch wide slot, lots and lots of water. Took about 100 yards of material to put back on the bank. What, this was one of our good lines.
Define 100 yards of material like you did for me. How many dump truck loads?
20 dump truck loads.
20 dump truck loads? Where did it go?
Down the wash.
Down the wash, huh? That's how you get those slump holes or whatever, in Florida?
Nobody complained down the road, nobody complained down there of water damage or anything?
Nope.
Not yet.
Nope. A few people stopped by and thought the creek was running a lot higher than they... They thought the creek wasn't running this time of year. And those, that neighborhood, I felt, we all felt sorry for them because Saturday a power pole was hit.
Oh, no.
A bunch of them were out of power all day Saturday and then they were out of water all day Sunday. They were very patient customers. We appreciated that. And what we can tell, this was a mortar lined and asphalt coated pipe. This is our good pipes that were put in in the 60s. We haven't surveyed them before because we haven't had a lot of problems with them. So we'll be contemplating surveying them because to the best that we can tell, at some point in the past, it got dinged by a backhoe tooth that broke the mortar on the inside, which allowed the corrosion to start. So then down bottom of a hill in the berries, that leak started. It was going, it was going, it was going. And pretty soon it starts getting enough pressure where it, you know, that expansion happens pretty quick. It reaches a weak spot and started traveling down the pipe. And then it's a spiral welded pipe. So when it got near the welds, those are actually the stronger points than the pipe itself. And that's when it started peeling down on the sides, to the best we could tell.
How big was the pipe?
It was a 16 inch.
16 inch.
So kudos to all of those involved in that. Additional kudos, you remember at the last board meeting, we, the board rejected all the bids for that project on Clark Road to get out of the way of the Caltrans overlay. We sat down with Keith and Neil and in the midst of trying to deal with Skyway and getting it wrapped up. Because we've got, we've got the Clark intersection by Caltrans. And then we've got the town wanting to do a micro-surfacing project on Skyway and also on Clark. So they were trying to get the Skyway project wrapped up ahead of their micro-surfacing there. They were doing stuff on the Pearson Road that we're getting paid for as the contractor hit a few things and they were relocating. But they also found the time to jump in here. And you know, this wasn't an easy project as you could tell by the bids. It's a 20 inch main, 6 inch tap. We got the line across the road. Got it all. It's buttoned up now and they plan to pave it next week. And so we'll be done with that. I think we have one service left to do. So they were able to jump in and take care of that with a lot of effort. Couple longer days than standard. But the crew did a really good job on that. I didn't put anything on water rights in here. I talked to our water rights engineer last week. We're finalizing some stuff. Neil was on vacation for a while, so we're gonna get back together and try and keep that moving forward. We did receive notice yesterday or today of aluminum violation for our MPDS permit. Aluminum levels were higher than what our permit allows. So we were informed that a violation letter is on the way and it carries a mandatory minimum $3,000 fine. So we need to keep moving forward on our process of water recycle project.
We know what caused it?
No.
Just one of those?
It was isolated. It was the second one in five years. 2010 was the last one.
Is it the...
The most recent one, so two only.
It's the water we're putting back into Megalia?
I'm sorry.
Is it the water we're putting back into Megalia from the pools?
The suspended solids was very high. You can correlate suspended solids and aluminum. So both numbers were high, so we did our protocol procedures. We do the same every time and don't really understand operationally why.
Jim, this was self-reported, right?
Of course.
So...
In three, four hours.
This again is the difference in culture between regional state boards and other state agencies. Even though it's a self-reported violation, they have these quote unquote mandatory minimum penalties where they claim they're non-discretionary. But there is some discretion, but we'll have to look at it, see if we can maybe negotiate it down. So we'll see.
The other thing I want to report on, some of you were on the board when I brought forward my big dream project. And what that basically is, was we were trying to find a way to pay for a new Megalia dam. And one of the ideas that may make that work would be if you created between Paradise Lake and Megalia Dam, a pumped storage project. So essentially you have enough storage in the reservoirs so you drain the water from Paradise during the peak energy hours, noon to 6:00, and you generate electricity that is three to four times the value of off-peak power. And then during the off-peak, you pump that water back up to Paradise and you do it over again Monday through Friday. The idea is that will generate revenue that will help pay for the capital project of installing a dam. Well, that was one of the things I had discussed with Chevron Energy Solutions when they first came to the district. And they couldn't see a place for that at that time. And we eventually went forward with the metering project. Well, Kevin Bell was working for them at the time. He's now with a company called Schneider Electric, very, very large corporation. It's got its hands on a lot of different things and Energy Solutions is one of them. And so he came up and we visited and he got my latest data on that idea. And they're gonna kick it around and see if they think it's worthy of moving forward. Because peak energy and green energy, if it can be characterized as that, is really gaining in value. So I was glad to see it's still swirling around out there. Maybe there's hope yet.
Now George, you, I don't know whether that was just a slip of the tongue or if you were serious, but you said we'd do that pumping back up Monday through Friday. We would not do it on Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah, because that's off-peak power time.
Okay.
Wouldn't make sense to bring the water down.
Would you use the bypass or a different?
Well, the bypass is intended to still be connected wherever the dam stops. So at that point, that's, that would be the release pipe into the treatment plant, depending on where you built the dam. But it would take a large tunnel by between the tubes to create the pressure to operate the turbine.
Don't they do that still at the Orville Dam? They release water, pump it back up at night?
I don't think Orville does that.
They used to do it.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't remember that. They're doing it, there's a dam in San Diego, I think they do it. Olive Vine, is it?
I'm sure that they used to do it because a guy by the name of Clark, the bought a house of ours, was in charge of all that down there. And then some of the engineers, I know that they did it at one time. Maybe it didn't pan out to be economical.
Yes, sir.
I think it's two out of the series of pumps that's at Orville that's capable of pumping it back. There's only very few, but I think it's two of them that does that.
Yeah, they were doing it, I know.
Yeah, they...
For several years. I don't know how long ago.
Only two of the turbines can do that.
Were two of the turbines?
All right. I have a question.
Sure.
I was gonna bring it up later in the meeting because water rights weren't mentioned in his printed report, so I wanted to bring it up now. I was told that one of the reasons we're having, staying so much time to renew our water rights was the Blatter Dam was part of the application. Is the Blatter Dam part of the application for our water, renew of our water rights?
Not specifically, no.
It's not listed in the negotiations on our water rights at all?
No, no particular project's part of the discussion. That's not what's holding us up. If you remember, we have two permits, our oldest permit and newer one. And what we're trying, been trying to do is work with their staff based on all of our historical data to determine what we have perfected as a water right. Because they want us to go to license. And we started this project expecting to extend both permits. They would like us to go license on our oldest permit. So hammering out those terms is part of this process. And you don't want to have an EIR on terms you're guessing. If at all possible, we want them to buy in what the actual language and terms would be so that can be included in the EIR.
Okay, but, okay, thank you for answering my question. Later on, I think it's in the budget or something, it mentions the Blatter Dam with the water rights. So since you mentioned it in your verbal report, I thought I'd ask the question now instead of later.
Lauren, you had a question?
Yeah, I was hoping that George would expand a little bit. Was it in your report about how our grant persons doing and we got an update on that or?
They're on board. She hasn't found anything. She's been working with Jim on our two loan, state loan processes at this time.
Okay. Let's go on. Was that it George? That was everything?
Bay Delta. Thank you.
But you're meeting just today?
I went to the Bay Delta Conservation Plan Forum that was put on by Butte County and Glen County's water departments. And it was very interesting. They had pretty heavy hitters. A full room of a couple hundred people probably. The Bay Delta Plan was presented by Dr. Jerry Merrill. He's the Deputy Secretary of California Resources Agency. So he was the one speaking in support of the tunnels and the rest of the plan. There was a gentleman from the San Luis and Delta Mendotal Water Authority. He was representing the state water project contractors and their viewpoint. There was an environmental fellow from the Planning and Conservation League. And the first, the fourth one kind of took over the meeting. Kind of felt like a campaign stop almost. He's a very polished politician. He spoke well, tried to please everybody there.
Who was it?
John Guaramendi from Third District.
He's against the project, yeah.
He's very much, very vocally against the project. He's got his own plan that includes conservation, desalinization, north of Delta storage, conjunctive use, groundwater and surface water in conjunction. So he kind of, he's kind of on the positives of a lot of people and then he hits negatives. And it was very interesting and he handled that very well. He is in support of a very small tunnel project. They call it the continuous zip and the big gulp or something like that. So it would be a small 3,000 CFS tunnel instead of the 9,000 to 15,000 CFS tunnels. And it would allow you to take water all the time, but anyhow, I won't give you his speech for you. And it would allow you to take water all the time, but anyhow, I won't give you his speech for you. But it was quite interesting. Again, it pretty much looks like whatever gets decided will probably end up in the courts for a while before anything gets built.
Supposed to have the report in October, yeah.
Yeah. Garimandi was very concerned, or at least he was using it as a tool, 'cause it was a very large environmental contingent there. That the governor was trying to bypass the EIR process for the rail project. And I guess recently he's trying to bypass the EIR process for some project at Lake Tahoe. So he's getting, telling everybody, get ready to try and bypass the EIR for the Delta tunnels project, so.
Who was the guy with the curly hair that looked like a scientist?
Where?
Looked like, at the meeting.
At the meeting?
It was on TV. He looked like a nerd with real curly hair.
With a suit on or talking?
I'm not sure. What was he talking about?
They didn't show. They just showed a picture of him. It sounded like he was in favor of the thing. Bill's girlfriend was there, too.
Oh, Loretta was there?
Barbara.
Almost was there.
Barbara. Oh, jeez. Not quite a girlfriend.
It was very good to put it out in the open and have a good discussion about it. Now was the purpose.
Did he talk anything about the sites reservoir?
He's in support of it.
The which reservoir?
Georgiana, please take Larry's comments out of the record.
It's a big off, it's a big off-stream reservoir over at Colusa, Cali. Colusa, yeah. Out of, up there in the foothills. All right. More questions from the board?
I have a comment.
Okay.
John Garimandi, I think he was Lieutenant Governor at one time, but he's a longtime liberal Democrat. And yes, he's always running for office, trying to figure out where he can go best. He's been, I think, an assemblyman. He's a congressman now. He, if you catch the Congress debates, he'll often be representing the Democratic side on the liberal edge. So he's quite a character, but he's managed to stay in some sort of office all these years.
Career.
Polished, like you said.
He's very polished.
That go over the meeting. California Kennedy? That go over the meeting.
Kinda.
If there's no more questions, we'll go ahead and move on to the legal report. We've got a lot of stuff on our agenda, so we better get moving on this stuff. Dustin?
Okay, I have three items. I'll try to be quick. The first is AB 145. That's the bill that I've mentioned to you a few meetings now. The proposal is to move the drinking water program from the Department of Health to the State Board. That gained a lot of momentum. It looked like it was gonna be a sure bet. All of a sudden it was put into a suspense file at a Senate Appropriations Committee, and that's where it sits today. I guess Aqua Ledge Committee is of the view that it will be taken out of suspense and voted on this year, and the governor's likely to sign it, so they've kind of conceded defeat a little bit. But at least as of right now, if it stays in the suspense file, it'll be dead until the next legislative year. George asked me to speak a little bit about the water bond. You remember, this is the same bond that's been going for the last five or six years now. We're kind of in the infant stages of resuscitating that at a legislative level in preparation for a vote next November, November 2014. The proposals, Aqua's proposal is let's trim it down, let's take it from about 11.4 to 8.2 billion dollars. About 3 billion of that is for surface storage projects, predominantly sites reservoir, which somebody mentioned, and then temperance flash, which is in the San Joaquin Valley. But, you know, there was a lot of pork in the original bill that had nothing to do with water. It was actually funny to read it. So Aqua would like to see it slimmed down. And Senator Wolk has actually, Wolk, I call her Wolk. She has actually introduced a bill that would kind of accomplish the similar type things. It would reduce the size of the bond and take out some of the pork. So, you know, I would expect a really lengthy and thorough debate the next legislative year and then a chance to take a position on that and vote on it, as I said, in November 2014. The last item I want to speak to is the district, this is in regards to Ken's accident. The district received a Public Records Act request from a private eye from San Francisco. And it was the items of information that this person was looking for. It was pretty clear that they were examining whether they could make a claim that the district was somehow liable for some role in the accident. So they asked for Ken's attendance at meetings, committee meetings. They asked for the district's car reimbursement policy, a number of different items.
Cell phone.
Cell phone, record, or reimbursement. So, you know, as I said, it was very clear from the request, they were digging to see if possibly Ken was either coming or going on district business, which I can confidently state he was not. So we received that. We responded in accordance with the Public Records Act. And the documents have actually been delivered already to the PI firm. Since that date, Ken has been served with a lawsuit. I asked him and he was kind enough to share a copy of that with me. I wanted to see, I knew that the district was not named, but I wanted to see how the district was treated, if at all, in that lawsuit. And there's, there's two ways. Let me back up. You know, I've often told you that filing a lawsuit is much different from winning a lawsuit. And people can file lawsuits for any reason. I mean, you're just, you're really limited by your imagination, is all. So I can't tell you today that there's no chance that the district won't be named in a lawsuit. I can tell you I'm confident that if we were named, we would ultimately prevail, but, you know, you'd have to go through the expense in the process. So with that in mind, I wanted to look at the suit to see what, what type of process would entail to actually name the district. And there's two different processes. One is they could amend the complaint by submitting what's known as a Doe Amendment. It's typical, they did this in their lawsuit. You name so many Does, one through, and they did one through 50. So there's 50 different Does that are somehow responsible, they claim, for the accident. And they could submit a Doe Amendment, naming Paradise Irrigation District as Doe Number One, for example. That would be one way to loop in the district as a formal party. The second possibility, which would be, in my opinion, the more defensible approach, if they were to name the district, would be to actually formally amend the complaint. They would need to request leave of the court to do that. And they would amend their complaint to name the district, and they would need to come up for some kind of reason why the district would be liable. I can't think of one, because it would be a stretch, but if they did that, we'd obviously look at it and we'd respond accordingly. So I, I thought it's a sensitive subject, obviously, but I thought it was one that you ought to know that there is this possibility out there. And if anything ever comes of it, we'll bring it back to you at the next available meeting.
Any questions for Dustin? Yeah, I think the fact that we don't, we only pay for going out of town, that would be something to hang on, hang on, defend on. And he wasn't going to a meeting. We had no meeting that day. Provide no car. Yeah. We did? What meeting?
There was a public relations meeting that morning.
Oh.
Yes.
And it was from, what, nine o'clock until 10:30 or something?
Oh, it's already over?
I don't know when it was.
Ken and I are on the same committee.
Oh, okay.
It took place that morning and.
It was over?
It was over, long over. 'Cause later in the day, I actually drove by the accident scene after it occurred. And so I was on my own business going to the bank. And Ken was on his own business. We had all, long ago, finished up that meeting and we got along very well, which was strange. We normally don't.
What? Can they, you know, on TV, they say that they can tell when you were on your phone and all that stuff. Can they really do that?
Yes.
And you weren't, right?
I was not.
Right. And he, so.
They investigated.
So he can prove that, beyond a shadow of doubt, that he wasn't.
Well, the main thing for the district is that, and I don't know what time we formally adjourned that meeting, but as I recall, it was about 10:30 or something like that. And the accident happened at 1:00.
And you had gone down to your office and you were actually heading back somewhere else?
I had been in my office working and leaving for lunch.
But again, it's, it's very easy to start a lawsuit. It's much more difficult to win a lawsuit. So the standards for naming somebody versus winning are very vastly different, so.
I'm surprised they haven't named the town of Paradise.
They may.
Well, Paradise doesn't have any money.
If there's 50 Does in there, I must imagine one of them is going to be the town of Paradise if there's 50 Does named, so.
Yeah.
Generally, when you file a lawsuit, you name everybody you possibly can.
Sure.
That's the strategy.
Right.
They sacrifice that for speed, in my opinion, and they only named Ken and they named 50 Does.
What's the advantage of speed?
PR, in my opinion. I don't know that for sure, but they're obviously.
They wanted to hit back after District Attorney Ramsey gave his press conference.
He's so worried about PID directors. Ramsey, you know, we're in chat with him.
All right. I'm the one that's supposed to have the sarcastic humor.
So it was a sad event and our thoughts are with Ken and his family, as well as the family of the young boy. We can only see what time will tell. I just, I find that most of the people I know are not blaming Ken. I just wanted to. I would definitely ask all the directors to refrain from comment on it. I think that would probably be Dustin's advice, too. Right.
Yeah, it's, I mean, unless the district is implicated in some manner in the lawsuit, it's really, this will be the last time I talk about it.
None of us have direct knowledge, you know, or we're standing there when it happened, so I think really it's one of the things. I know George was down there during the reenactment, just as a representation of the district and all indicators. Well, I know people bring it up to me because they know I'm on the board with him. It was an unfortunate accident that if we could turn back the hands of time, I'm sure we all would. Let's move. We have, number seven was old business. We have none. Thank you, Dustin, for your report, too, on there. We're gonna go into new business. Would we like to hit items B through G and try to maybe get those done with? Or do we want to do the budget first? I will tell you, I'm gonna do the budget. If it's going to look like it's going to run into a very long and lengthy process, I will move it to another meeting, or we will move all the rest of these to old business in another meeting, so. But I think there's a lot of stuff here that's pretty much no-brainer stuff as we go down through items B through G. So why don't we move?
I like your idea of B through G.
All right.
Man, Mr. President, I had mentioned something.
I have a lot of questions about the budget.
And I, maybe Kevin recalls this, 'cause he asked this question a couple years ago. There is a, you do need to enact a budget with a certain, within a certain number of days. Is it 60 or 90?
90.
90?
I know we need to address that.
So we're about 60 days.
October 1st.
We're about 30.
October 1st.
21st, so we're about 51 days.
October 1st. I ask if it is up to July 1st.
Yeah, I don't know.
If I was, believe me, if I was gonna move it to another meeting, it would be very soon from tonight's date, so.
If it's one issue, we could have a special meeting, too, to take care of.
So let's go ahead and let's start with items 8B, rehabilitation, pump station number two. Manager Barber, if you want to give us a synopsis of that. I think we all kind of are aware from what we've heard from Jim.
Yep. Jim did a good job doing this RFP. We have his recommendation. I give him props. Let me go to the.
164.
This sheet here. I give him credit because he attempted to recommend that Concepts and Controls be awarded Project Two and MCC Controls be awarded Project One. But we weren't specific enough in our RFP that that could happen and neither contractor liked that idea. So that's why we're recommending you go with Concepts and Controls. He did background checks on them, preferences. They did field visits before their bid. We're comfortable with them at this point and ready to move forward. And our recommendation with pricing is to take care of both Project One and Project Two.
I noticed the Concepts and Controls excludes additional radio hardware, which is, and it looks like the antenna on there. Does that impede the, the skate is not radio-controlled, is it? Or is it, isn't it hardwired?
It's radio-controlled.
Jim, go ahead.
You raised a really important question and I thank you, 'cause Concepts and Controls did do quite a bit of homework on the radio communication. But the point is, there's a lot of, a lot more study that has to go into actually determining what hardware is necessary. It's still undefined. So when they actually do a radio survey and they use their expertise, they will have to come back to the board and say, "In order to correct this communication problem that we have up above the plant from the lake, we would need this level, some hardware, an antenna and repeater and such." But we don't know yet. It's undefined. This component of the project is almost like a third project. We have, we have the consolidation of the controls and we have the tanks. This one was, this is, this does, it's important that we solve this problem because it links all these two things together. So it's, in essence, it's a project that needs more study, engineering expertise brought to bear.
We have intermittent problems, correct?
We have intermittent problems. They're, it's very unreliable, but it's, system works sometimes. There's long time delays in our radio communications. We think it's, we think it's solvable by the proper location of a new antenna and a repeater site above Megalia. Like maybe by the grocery store. But we don't know that yet, but we need experts to help us figure that out. And Concepts and Controls are qualified to do that for us.
You put a TV down there, my daughter will just sit there with her cell phone if you want, you know, if she's got good cell service, so.
Yes, sir.
The botanical gardens are across from the grocery store and actually have, you can see from there down to the treatment plant, down to the lake and so forth. Should I bring it up at the botanical garden meeting that we have, possibly have an interest of putting an antenna on that property?
Too, no, no, it's too early. Don't, I wouldn't, no. I think there's the existing antenna in Megalia that Bill Taylor thinks is a potential, a possible solution.
Tall enough tower?
So we would have to, yeah, piggyback on that existing tower. But we need evidence before we would go seek out the people that own that tower and ask them for some solution there. But we don't, so we don't want to, I would say, it's still, we're still studying this.
I won't say anything at the botanical garden meeting.
Where MCC estimates 65, 70 for the radio in there, do you think that's a relatively close number under additional items?
I think MCC says also plus additional scope and cost.
Plus additional scope and cost, but I mean, okay, so there's their basic number.
In addition to their bid, they wanted more money.
Exactly, for the, for the radio.
Yes, just 'cause like you said, it's kind of a third project, they recognize it as something, a lot of additional work. CX, Concepts and Controls did that level of work that MCC didn't.
Okay. So if we were to say maybe $10,000 to upgrade the radio system to maybe get it to where it is?
No, I have no feeling for that cost.
You can't say whether it's closer to 100,000 or 10,000?
No, sir. I think it's closer to his. I don't, I think it's closer to his. Just talking, no, it's not, no, we're, no, we don't, these aren't sophisticated pieces of equipment.
No, but if you have to build a tower and antenna tower.
And then there is, I mean, I talked to Concepts and Controls today about how reliable a fix might be and he, he was suggesting it, we, we talked about reliability from, you know, is it gonna be, is there a bang for our buck to do it and gain reliability? Or, or is there not? Is it still gonna be marginal like George suggested? Or indicated, not suggested. It is marginal.
Are we gonna get?
It is marginal. So we, we do want, before we ask for the money, we want to make sure that, that it's a solution or, or the, or the reliability will be there.
So, but even looking at Concepts and Controls' final number and then looking at MCC's final number, we should nowhere be near MCC's final number, even with the additional radio costs.
Uh, we'll be much less than that. We're talking about a repeater, which is just a piece of, no, it's, it's not, nothing sophisticated. An antenna, we hope to piggyback on an antenna.
And this is between where to where?
Well, it's really, the way I understand, it's more of like from the lake to the, to the plant and, and out to the tanks.
To the tanks.
So we need, the line of sight from the lake is blocked by the forest. We need to shoot up to Megalia and then down. Everything's line of sight, so, you know, familiar with. You know, if you have a tree in the way, you got problems. And we got them.
So no matter what, even with the radio solution, we should still come out using Concepts and Controls. We should still be considerably less than MCC's.
Absolutely. Yeah, and we'll see, well, MCC still wants to add all those additional costs plus, yeah, so, they're way, they're way higher.
And you were in the restroom when George suggested you'd like to use one for Project One and one for Project Two, but that just wasn't gonna fly, so.
We tried.
Yeah, we appreciate you trying to, to make that happen, but, yeah, and I can see why.
It's a good thought. But there's some realities about consistency and value of using one contractor to do both of these projects. And is that value worth thirty thousand dollars? You know, what, we could debate that forever, but, but it's, there's a lot, it's important to, to go with one contractor.
Obviously, one company, if you split it between the two, they're just gonna be pointing fingers if something goes wrong. It's gonna be nothing but a finger-pointing contest as to, it's their fault, it's our fault. We're never gonna get, we'll be standing here going, "We got a problem. Who's gonna solve it?" One company.
SCADA, this is a lot, this project's a lot about SCADA. There's all kinds of ways to program SCADA. It's, there's, there's art, it's art, there's art involved. You can program something. It, programming SCADA has a fingerprint and it's unique. So, we really want one, one person to do the, this programming, not two. Like you, that's, the finger-pointing would possibly be there. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, if you remember, when we did our first SCADA upgrade, that's why we did a, a design-build for the same reason, 'cause you would have the designer design it and the contractor would point at the designer saying he did it wrong and back and forth and it just doesn't work.
Now, who's our, our current little SCADA expert is, Jason? Jeremy.
It's a J word.
It was a J word, exactly, yeah. Well, I was thinking it was Jeremy, but I always see Jason here, so that's what was making me think of him, so whenever he's here at the meetings, so. We don't get to see Jeremy as much, so. And he's been doing a great job from what I hear, so. Thank you, Jim. Questions from the public? Do they have any questions on this? Okay, I'm gonna add the public's time on that and directors?
I move approval to authorize the general manager to execute an agreement with Concepts and Control Inc. for Projects One and Two not to exceed one hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars, including bonding.
Second?
I'm sorry to cut you off, but now you can ask us if we want to.
That's, no, that's fine. Is there any other questions? We've been looking at this for a while, so I think we need to get, move forward on it. Jim, I think it was at the last meeting expressed, we, we really could have some problems, some potential problems if things went down in that area, right? Isn't this also connect with, um, the A-zone pump? Wasn't that the one you were saying was the, didn't we have some problems with that just recently?
With pump station two?
Yes.
Well, we had a lot of different problems with pump, that's the whole point of this project is to solve.
Well, exactly.
Control, yes. We, we're, we are well on, on the way with your decisions to get over some, get over these pump station two problems.
Yes.
There's no other vulnerabilities that we talked about, but in the system line, but focused on pump station two, your, your decisions have gotten us over. Gotten us through this, so it's, we appreciate that.
You know, it seems like, I'm just observing this for the last pushing a year now, I guess. It seems like we're always having problems and a hundred thousand dollars or so to spend on all these. Did you see what we're gonna have them all upgraded? Is this the one that we passed? The, uh, pump, for the gasoline engine?
Yes, that, that was a part of this, a huge part of this project.
Or the Murphy switches.
Is to get all the components of the gas engine operating correctly.
That's already been, is that already been purchased or is it?
It's in, it's in being fabricated by the manufacturer now. It's, there's about an eight-week period that they need to put this thing together.
We, we've got two items, we've got two items of business on here regarding pump stations and all that and I realize that we have to have them, but are they all wore out? What's wrong with them? Are they just all wore out?
We only have one pump station, thank goodness. Well, we have, pump station one was taken out of service years ago. I was just there today shaking my head. It's really.
Well, I wanna ride along with you, y'all shake my head, so I become more knowledgeable.
Yeah, I'll show you pump station one.
Good, good.
Be glad to.
But you haven't answered that. Are they all wore out?
There was only one other.
All the tanks and all this sitting around in the country, they're all getting older. Are they wore out or what's wrong with them?
What do you, what?
Always needing, they're always needing repair. The minute you finish them, they start falling down right there and then. What state are these in?
We're, they're in very good shape.
Okay, good.
For their age.
For their age.
Every steel tank, every, like, A-tank we just did this year. Expect in eight to ten years, we'll be painting it again. Two thousand four, we did the other three. We're looking to repaint them in twenty fourteen, fifteen. It's just the state of its maintenance.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, like the bridge, they, they get to one side of it and they start back over.
Pump station number two has just been patched together, fixed over time and this was our pitch to you to try and get us to get it off on one page.
It's kinda like, it's kinda like me and my health, just one big old road patched.
George has directed me to, to get the other tanks, other than A, that we just finished. The roofs need to be sandblasted and coated and the shells need to be waterblasted. That is not an expend, on all the tanks. So we're really early on doing maintenance on the other tanks, which lowers costs and preserves the tanks before they rust, they get like A. I know, maybe we're getting off, I'm sure we're getting off the subject.
I think we, I think we thank staff for doing that.
I'm not, I'm not advocating, I'm not being critical, I'm not advocating. If I was gonna advocate anything, I would say we'd wanna keep them in top.
We are doing that, we're on, this budget acknowledges those, those tank, uh.
Needs.
Like the specs that you wrote up.
Projects that he mentioned.
Like the specs that you wrote up on that new engine with the Murphy switch and all that, that's, that's a state-of-the-art engine right there. With all the protection you could have and that's great.
Will be.
Oh, yeah, certainly will be.
This is, this is the issue where we're spending ten thousand dollars a month renting that generator?
Yes, that also. And unfortunately, we're going in with a second one.
Right. And we'll have two or two and a half months of rental on that?
I'm hoping to. We have confirmation from PG&E that they're gonna start on Monday with their, their holiday. Delta Regulator Bank, it's a trans, it's a transformer that balances three phases. Three-phase power, forty, four hundred and eighty volt. And the problem at, at that station is when people, at four to five o'clock in the afternoon, everybody turns on their conditioner and you get phase imbalance on a four hundred and eighty volt motor, it won't run. And, and in the summer, so, and it only takes about eighty-five degrees. It can happen at eighty degrees. Happens, you know, ambient outside temperature. So, yes, the generator's part of this.
Yeah, I, I asked George, I said, you know, "How much does this generator cost if we're spending ten thousand dollars a month to rent one?" 'Cause, you know, if it's only gonna cost sixty or seventy thousand dollars, maybe we should buy it, but I think George was around a half a million dollars.
Three hundred to half a million, probably.
Well, we have, I, I've written, drafted a claim to PG&E to be reimbursed, this cross our fingers, that they see some justification in our claim. You can always file a claim, but can you get the money? I just learned that today.
My words coming out.
We'll see. We'll see. We, George, we, we are gonna install a switch, a permanent switch at the pump station, so, um, instead of renting a switch, right, that we're doing now, um, we'll have a switch installed, so in the future, we can rent a, a generator and the cost will be less.
Plug in.
If I, if we ever need it. And the reason you would need that is if you drop probably in a major winter storm, when there's huge power outages or there's a firestorm out and all the power's going crazy, we might need a generator there to walk the pumps, so.
Well, thank you for all your hard work on this, all the staff involved. We're gonna wait for Director Flesher to come back. Was there any other questions for Jim while we're waiting for Director Flesher to come back?
Could we take about a ten-minute break?
Let's vote on this and then we can take a break right after that and then we can move through these.
I thought we were gonna vote on whether we were gonna take a ten-minute break.
Just vote, bypass the vote on that. We'll just go ahead and we'll, we'll just go ahead.
Vote on whether you should vote on.
All right, we're gonna vote with him.
We can vote.
Yeah, 'cause we've got a lot to, we've got a lot to do here and.
Expect to get home before eleven.
It's gonna be lucky if we're not here by midnight, so let's.
If we were to vote on whether or not we needed to take a break, we, we couldn't, none of us could vote because it would have a conflict of interest.
The longer these meetings get, the more I feel, maybe we should go, but, I've never been on the board when they have two meetings a month, but I think we're headed toward that with these meetings.
Yeah, when I, when I first came aboard and you were already there, we were doing two meetings a month.
Were we doing two months?
Yeah, just, just for a few months and then it changed.
We didn't get to vote on that.
Well, if you look at tonight's agenda, it's not that out of whack, except the budget. And as we said, I put the budget on as an action item, so you have the ability to take action. We're certainly comfortable with you tabling it to a special meeting. Not a problem at all.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, actually. Have to agree with George for a change, but I think that's.
Did you get that?
You have?
Was the tape on?
So, Director Flesher, I don't know if you just heard that, but George said there would be no problem in moving it to the, I don't know. I think everybody's kinda been in communication with Kevin. So, maybe we have answered most of our questions on the budget in earlier parts of this week and the week before. I don't know if everybody, I know Director Flesher had some time with you and.
I'll see you all for the question.
Yeah, so, we'll get to that here in a sec. Okay, so, uh, read back, can you read back the, it's right there.
No, it isn't. That's the wrong one. I have already jumped to the next time.
All in favor?
All in favor of?
Of the motion.
Of Ken's motion.
Of Ken's motion, very second. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. We're gonna call a five-minute recess, actually six minutes.
You said ten.
You asked for ten, he's giving you six.
Four. I'm gonna give you a six-minute recess till eight oh five.
I couldn't wait.
Reconvene at eight oh seven. Okay, item number C, safe drinking, water state revolving fund planning application resolution. George, you wanna give us a little, I think we all read it, if you wanna give us a quick.
Yeah, we've had the, the B-res on the state revolving fund list, I think, since we did the B-res cover project, which we all knew was temporary back in oh six. And finally, it reached deep enough into their funding category to become eligible. We aren't ready to handle nor probably be successful on the full construction grant this time around, so we are asking for the five hundred thousand dollar not-grant loan to take care of engineering, SEQA, planning, all that, those kind of things.
Basic stuff we're gonna need to go forward.
That'll allow us to go forward. And so this is a year approval for us to make that application by September twentieth. Jim's done an excellent job piecing all this together, got ninety-eight percent of it together and coffee's going down to Silver Consulting for, to make sure we say things correct the best way we can, our grant-writing contract. And, uh, so we are, we are, again, thanks, Jim, for all his efforts.
Absolutely.
And we think this is a great start on getting a permanent B-resever or taken care of. We, we won't know until final's final, but there is some provisions for, for disadvantaged communities to get the interest rate at zero. And that may be a possibility, but the definition of disadvantaged changes from time to time, as well as the rules to apply, so it could even get better than what we're estimating right now.
Will the six million, six hundred thousand, will that be something that we can apply into their fund for also later on?
Yes.
So by doing this, taking the initial five hundred thousand, we're, are we still, are we bumping ourselves back to the beginning of, like where we were five, two thousand and six? Okay, okay, are we still up at the top of the list or?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but I think if we're successful in this and we get, get through the process, we're in a better position to get, to do our construction funding.
It's actually just a continuation of getting the money.
Okay.
It's really a prudent step in planning. You have to demonstrate alternatives and financial capabilities and environmental capabilities in the project. And once you've done all that, just you get, you go into approval to go to final design and it just kind of flows.
And final funding.
At this point, pretty much as long as you have complete applications, it, it's a process. It takes years. We're really gonna have to see a, debt, this doesn't, this doesn't mean debt services this year, it's years from now.
Years from now, you're talking about.
So, we actually have to start paying back the money.
And we're all in the understanding this is.
He'll, he'll become way more involved in this and that scheduling when this project actually, once it's complete and is being complete, you know, you start paying off the money then. You can see how it's a long time from now, right?
Yes. So, we're just doing the application right now? That's all, we're not, we're not committing to any loan or anything like that? So I don't think there should be any conflict with any of the directors, but let me know now if there is.
I move approval to adopt PID resolution number two thousand thirteen oh eight to apply for the funding from the Safe Water State Revolving Fund and authorize the general manager to sign and submit the application.
I'll second that. Okay, any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, now, this five hundred thousand doesn't go to the state fund. It goes to plan so that we can apply for this.
Well, most, I'll spend just a brief moment. We have to do a statement of qualification, selection of design consultant.
And that's what, one of the things.
Most familiar with, that process. Excellent process to select a qualified consultant. Most of that five hundred thousand dollars will go to a design consultant, Michael E. Rowell or whoever else similar consulting firms that, that specialize in concrete tanks. That's what we're looking for by doing a statement of qualifications. Because they've designed the kind of steel bulk tanks, steel load tanks, doesn't mean they qualified or designed concrete. That's, that's type of consultant.
This, this, this tank that you're talking about, the pond that's there, and I call it a pond, is about three billion gallons and the one that you're hoping for in planning is a ten billion.
Yes.
With a concrete top on it, just like the one up at the treatment plant. And that five hundred thousand is going to be for all of the planning stages of it, including the actual drawing.
It finishes preliminary design report.
SEQA, like, like?
The, the final design, I believe, becomes part of the construction, uh, application. But that's just a transition. But that's just a transition, um, at this point, to identify all the, all that's.
Yeah, but if, if, if we didn't, if we didn't do this now, even though it's gonna be year, i- if we didn't do this now, in this fashion, even though it's gonna be years down the road, we wouldn't be in the hopper. We wouldn't be in the process.
Well, we stay in the hopper, but, um.
We just don't move forward, didn't it?
The level of funding changes annually as to how far they'll reach, so if we say no this year, and then instead of H category, they only go to G, we're out of luck.
I understand. So this appears to me, when I was looking at it, and I talked to Jim also, a very wise move on our behalf.
Yeah, tell me why, apparently, are, are we excluding looking at steel tanks, and why are we looking at a concrete tank instead of steel, is it size, does that matter?
Well, number one's partially security and life expectancy, but the number one reason we're looking at it there is an engineering issue. Because of the elevation of that tank, and how tall it can be is very particular to our treatment plant, because the gravity flow between our treatment plant and B reservoirs are very tight, very close fit.
It is, oh, okay.
So.
Naturally, you can't have this tank higher than where you're pumping.
Correct, where the treatment plant releases.
Otherwise, you'll always fill, you'll only fill it halfway.
So we actually need to have a tank that's into the ground, at least a portion of it, to get our elevations correct, it's gonna be
Wow.
more area, and the bigger area get, shorter the tank, the steel tanks get less, um, cost-effective.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the directors? No? Good, roll call vote, please.
Director Fletcher?
Yes.
Director Hatt?
Yes.
Director Kellogg?
Um, yes.
Director Duncan?
Yeah.
President Kellogg?
Yes, passes five zero. Onto the next item, eight D, transmittal of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen tax rate at Butte County, I think we do, this is something we do every year, it'll be resolution twenty thirteen dash oh nine. Would, uh, who wants to tell us about this?
I can tell you a moment, it's, uh, it's based on our voter-approved debt back in nineteen seventy-seven, the voters approved, uh, what they call the Davis Grunsky loan. That loan is paid through property tax, um, from the Presidents of Paradise, so every year, what we have to do is take into consideration what the values are, based on the assessor down at the county, and what, how much money we need, and basically back into a tax rate, so they know what to tax their parcel value at, and that rate then will, um, calculate what that amount is, that amount is then collected on the property taxes, and then it's then given to us to pay down that debt, so, um, what we have to do every year is calculate what we have in reserve, meaning what we've collect, more, collected more than what the debt is, so every year, we're kind of accumulating a reserve amount, and we have to deduct that from that amount that we're looking for this year, and then that's where we back into that tax rate, so if you see on that calculation, there's a reserve amount, that's amounts that we've collected more than what the debt was.
It was a seventy-five thousand.
And then this, actually, next year will be the last year of this, and we will have to go through some type of iteration to make sure that we zero out everything at the end of that, so we're not collecting more than what we cause trying to then refund people their property tax, gonna be a nightmare, so, uh, we're gonna have to probably go down and sit with the assessor to make sure that we get the exact amount collected on that property tax statement next year, just to make sure that that debt is zeroed out at the end of that year, so.
This is actually a dinosaur, you never see these, cause it's a pre-prop thirteen tax, an abhorrent tax, tax base, it's called an assessment, but it's basically an abhorrent tax. You just don't see them anymore, they're, prop thirteen basically got rid of them, but because we, the district was grandfathered in, you can still do this.
It was pre, um, corporation financing also, right?
COP.
COP?
Yeah.
Pre-COP.
So, I mean, back then, before prop thirteen, that's how the district funded itself, with property tax revenue, and then you had your, you know, enterprise revenue, your, your water charges, so. It's interesting to see it, and evidently, next year's the last year, huh, so.
That was gonna be my question.
You answered it already. Maybe we put it on eBay and sell it, and, you know, grant, antique.
Yeah, I know, used grant.
Yeah.
Used tax assessment.
Tax.
The used assessment.
Too bad, I, I mean, one thing we could look at is if there's a way to convert it to another use, I kinda doubt it, it's probably specific to pay off the Davis Grunsky loan, but it'd be nice if, um, since we are grandfathered.
What did it pay, what did we do with it, or what did they do with it?
The Davis Grunsky, that was.
No, with this assessment, what did, what, what did they do with the money that were?
This, this one?
Uh-huh.
This was raising Paradise Dam.
Raising the dam, okay.
Probably recreation, too.
Seventy, that was in seventy-five or seventy-six.
But we can, remember, uh, if it was last month or two months ago, the discussion on prop two eighteen, and how if you, especially with an assessment, you wanna broadly describe the assessment, so you have some flexibility on how you can use the funds. It would be a simple, similar thought on this, this abhorrent assessment, we could look and see if, if at that time, we narrowly defined the revenue to only be used to pay off Davis Grunsky, or if it was perhaps broadly, uh, defined, so that maybe we can continue using it at the discretion of the board for other uses, um, something we can look at, at least.
I think we should.
Drought water, uh, something like that.
Well, yeah, maybe something lake-related, I don't know.
I move we approve PID Board Resolution number two thousand thirteen oh nine, transmitting the district's annual assessment rate to the Butte County Auditor Controller.
Do I have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, or, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Director Duncan?
Aye.
Director Kellogg?
Aye.
Director Hatt?
Aye.
Director Fletcher?
Aye.
President Kellogg?
Aye.
Yeah, that's interesting, last time it started with yes, and it was all yeses, it started with ayes.
You started it with an I over there.
Yeah, you started with an I.
Next time, it'll be a tooth.
Okay, item D, uh, excuse me, that was D, uh, item E, Aqua Regional Two Board Election Ballot, twenty, uh, fourteen, fifteen term, Manager Barber, please.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, your opportunity to decide if you wanna continue, continue my, my efforts, I think it's a great, um, opportunity, I get a lot of interaction. Sometimes we get, uh, support on other issues, I used this forum just last week to, uh, broadcast our, uh, issue related to the Conservation Act, and they were all interested in seeing that, so they may support us in that effort, um, and this slate of people are, are all good people, um, I know them all, except for Sean Early, I've not met him, he's a new, uh, general manager of Rich Vale, probably in the last year.
Doug can tell you all about Sean, he, cause he managed, uh, Butte County Fair, which is starting this week.
Yeah, prior to moving to that position, Sean is a very dynamic type of a person, I would think you'd agree with me, Dustin.
Yeah, I think he's a good manager.
So do we just need to give you approval to continue on, I didn't?
You're voting to either concur with the committee's recommended slate, or pick and choose.
What is, what is your recommendation in regard to whether we concur with the, uh, nominating committee's slate?
I, I would support that.
Thought Walt Cutter was retiring, is he, is he gonna be around for another year?
Um, he's gonna be around for one to two more years, so then he will drop off, and
Somebody else.
Somebody, then I'll look for another candidate, that's how I ended up getting in this midterm.
Well, I, I move that we vote the nominating committee's recommended slate.
Second.
Further discussion? Public comment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Thank you for your continued work on that. Uh, F, the grand jury response, that is review and consider approval of letter to grand jury in response to findings of seven, of eight, and recommendation one is identified, the final report of the two thousand twelve, thirteen Butte County Grand Jury Report filed on June eleventh, two thousand thirteen. So, I see where we agreed with finding seven and finding eight, and then the recommendation, um, that, those are the three things, so all we're doing is agreeing with those in the italics, we're just agreeing with those three things.
The inti, yeah, the italics is the language out of the report, and then the, the agreeing with findings, those are, that's required in your response, either there's specific government code, Dustin walked me through, you either agree with it, or partially agree with it, or disagree with it, and then you have an explanation after the fact.
Okay, so I didn't know if those were the answers, that's the part I was, I was like, are, is this our answer?
No.
Or, are, are we saying?
Yeah, this is a proposal, but it's subject to.
This is not, yeah, yeah, this is my draft of a response, subject to your guys' input, however you agree with what I'm saying.
Or we could tell them to sit on it, yeah, yeah.
We have a lot, we have a lot of pull with it.
You don't tell the judge. Doris goes to jail on this one, so, I mean.
Oh, jeez.
So, George, on the recommendation R one, the grand jury's, uh, recommendation was that we continue to protect and increase its water storage, and you've said, not now, but we'll do it later. It, kind of.
Well, this has not been implemented.
Because we are continuing to protect it, but we haven't yet increased its water storage, so I could have, I could split it into two responses.
I, I think we should be a little bit more positive than saying this recommendation has not yet been implemented, because a lot of people only read a partial sentence, they don't read all the words that are down there, I think we should say.
But that's one of those, and I should have brought, put the government code in there, that's one of those specific things you have to state.
Yeah, so.
I see.
Do you like the way this is written, Dustin? I mean, I, I'm sure you were part of these responses.
It's, it's discretionary, I mean, if, well, let me, let me say, you're, you're talking about recommendation one, page two, right?
Yes, that's right.
So the universe of responses is, the recommendation will be implemented, the, uh, recommendation has not yet been implemented, but will be implemented in the future with a timeframe.
So it's multiple choice, huh?
Yes.
It is.
The recommendation requires further analysis with an explanation, or the recommendation will not be implemented because, for whatever reason.
Okay, of those, I like this answer the best, then.
Yeah, you also say this does sound like.
Thank you.
There was a method to his.
Well, that's why I couldn't figure out, why was our wording like that, that's why I was saying, is this actually our?
That doesn't sound like me speaking.
Well, that's why I was saying, you're, you're saying, yeah, we're gonna do it, but we're not.
Not his signature, I don't read that signature at all.
We're not gonna do it, but we're gonna do it, so, yeah, I didn't understand, I, that's why I was confused.
I have a question, the last sentence, PID has requested an extension of time with the Division of Water Rights to fully develop our permitted amounts by two thousand and thirty-two. So this gives us that time to worry about a dam replacement and other things, if we get our water rights renewed?
Yeah, back when we, when you approved the application for extension of time, it was a twenty-five-year extension, so you take two thousand and seven.
If we can keep our existing water rights, and that's what you're negotiating.
And going to license and all that.
If we per, if we go to license on the first one, then there's no more timeframe, because we built the storage that is included in the first permit. It's been constructed.
Which part of it, the Paradise Dam, or the Megalia Dam?
First permit is both.
Yeah.
So it doesn't allow, it doesn't give us any time to replace the Megalia Dam, and use, uh, the other, the water rights that are there?
Well, we're not under a time constraint, isn't that what you're saying?
That would be on the second permit.
We would only go to license on the first one.
Okay, the second, they still have it open to negotiate on the second.
And this, it's a negotiation. We, we can't do that yet, because as you said, we, we need to build out the use under that second permit, before we would contemplate that.
Okay, so it would be depending on when we built the, if we, if and when we build a new Megalia Dam.
I move we approve this letter to the grand jury with no changes.
One second.
All in favor, say a, uh, excuse me, any further discussion? Any comment from the public? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Passes five zero. Item G, salary information, Director Kellogg.
Uh, I was made aware that, um, other districts in the state, evidently quite a few, publish their payroll on their webpages, for the people in the communities that they serve would be aware what it was, and I know some directors don't like the word transparency, but that's the reason it's there, is to make the district transparent. Some of the problems we've got into with miscommunication, and others with our district customers, have been over wage rates, so if we have it published, and we publish it, the way Kevin's giving me, uh, payroll things, they can get it with a four-day wait if they want one, but it's listing no names, just the positions on the, on the payroll.
And the ranges?
And, no, just what, what their present salaries are.
And what their present salaries, or what their ranges are?
No, no ranges.
Other than on the state website? How is that, how is it posed on the state website, is it ranges?
No, on the state website, it pulls information off of, it asks for information off of the W twos.
It's, it's gross wages, based on, uh, and it's based on position.
No names, just position, I know that.
Position, and so you don't, you put down what they were paid last year, on their W two?
Well, it's.
When we report it to them, yes.
Well, now, that's interesting, because if they worked a bunch of overtime, then that's going to state that that's what they made, but it may not be indicative of what they're gonna get this year, if there's no overtime.
But the range is also located on their town.
I don't think you put the overtime down, I think you just put their base pay, that's all you're required to do, as I remember.
If you reported off a W two, a W two has.
No, you don't go off the W, you don't go off the W two for this report, in my understanding, cause I've had my salary put on there, is you just go their base pay, including benefits. I know that's what they did on my salary.
So where I see where Director Kellogg wants to go with this, I understand, um, what you're trying to show the public, and transparency is a good thing, I'm not sure, we're not causing a whole bunch of dissension within the, in, the, the employee community of PID.
Well, an employee wants this information, it's available, like anybody in the public, he just has to wait four days.
My, my thought is, how many employees are actually going to go get that information, if they're really that interested in what, uh, Bob's making, as opposed to what John's making?
Well, I think, I think you'd be surprised, I think the employees know what each other are making, uh, part of our staff is under the union, and part of our staff is under the management plan.
The search is not very real.
Raises have been similar, and everything, and, and employees, if, anything I've been involved with, with employees, that they're right on top of it, they're, they're not I don't think they're ignorant of this.
Oh, right.
Well, I, I kinda prefer the choice where I like what you're, you're doing, and putting it out there, I would not like to see it on the website, I would rather there be a link to this right here, which incorporates our wages in it.
Do an advanced search.
Doesn't it?
Say what?
If you can get it to work, um, this incorporates our wages in it. It has all the wages of all Butte County employees, and California State employees, and everybody that is, that has to report.
Correct.
Into this, so if we just put the link on our website.
Don't do it exactly.
Then anybody with an, uh, enough gumption, then can go get it.
Add the word district.
Well, let's see what they bring up.
Well, we looked at this, Ken and I looked extensively at this website, when we were looking into, uh.
Well, it was, it was the wages, George's wage increase.
George's wage increase, thank you, yes, we were searching all that, I, I know we spent some time on it, I guess I was blocking that part of my life out.
But, that might not even work.
But it was in there, and it kept, but, I personally, and I don't know how the rest of it, and it'll be up to the directors, how they feel.
Yeah.
Do not wanna have it just directly on our website.
Oh, there's the director, there's us.
Yeah.
Paradise Cemetery.
We're, we're there.
You know, the director, no, the, part of it was putting the directors in, um, everybody.
Yeah.
What the.
But it doesn't show our benefits.
No, it doesn't show the benefits, and, uh.
Yeah, so there's, there's your wages.
Yeah, that's off the side.
This is Paradise.
It does, like, this, this, this would include.
Now, where, where is this listed?
Right here.
Where is this listed?
This is in the government, California State Controllers.
That's the state controller.
Okay, you brought up other California, but you see, like. Okay, you brought up other California. But you see like. I've been listed in there on a couple educational things. And they only use your base pay. And like myself, I always taught additional classes and I got so much honor for that. But and I didn't get any retirement for that part. And that's where some of these fire people are getting it. They 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 should only get paid retirement on their base salary, not all this overtime they're getting.
Well, actually, we just saw something in there that showed base pay, overtime pay.
It's got overtime.
Now, go back to that last screen.
Well, I'm gonna find somebody that has overtime.
Bill.
Here.
Well, that'll work. Water treatment operator three.
Now, this one that we're just looking at is.
Same base overtime.
So it is there.
Other pay.
Other pay.
Other pay would be like salary or sick pay.
Sleepy, they were never listed overtime.
I said sleeping.
Yeah, reimbursement, but if like they sold their sick time or sold vacation or sold.
They do get paid for that because they get paid for off hour sleep time.
This that the year on this is two thousand and eleven.
Right, because we two thousand twelve is we haven't they haven't updated us for two thousand twelve.
Haven't updated it since two thousand and eleven.
Pull up a director.
It's listing two thousand and eleven expenses.
Pull up a director.
This is two thousand and eleven.
I feel this is sufficient enough information for anybody that is inquiring. They unfortunately, I think that too much information is not a good thing for most people. That's harsh to say.
And we also have their healthcare.
That's harsh that's harsh to say, but that's sometimes I just feel that.
Oh, yeah, who's that?
Seven meetings?
Administrator director.
Seven hundred?
It doesn't say.
That had to be Rick.
But it does give a it does give a regular pay range.
Seven hundred dollars was Rick.
It gave a regular pay range of zero to six thousand.
Probably was Rick.
Yeah, seven meetings.
Because a maximum of five meetings, twelve months.
But it does have the.
Maximum five hundred would be six thousand dollars. So it does show that right underneath there.
That's Ken.
That was Ken.
Forty-nine meetings, wow.
I have worried about it for over twenty years, all right, so.
You made forty. That was the year you were president, right?
What was that?
Forty-nine meetings you made that year.
Yeah, oh, two thousand and eleven.
Oh, you think that's me?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think that's you.
No, no, you were the president. You made more meetings than I did.
Only less.
Must be last.
I was gonna say, why do we only have four directors? Well, the other one's down at the bottom.
Oh, down at the bottom.
Yeah, I guess so.
Oh, Rick.
So we know we know who the director with, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Well, you know, I so one of the things, when we get to the budget, we're gonna have we're gonna have to go for a rate increase. And I think we're gonna it's gonna be in some cases a pretty substantial rate increase. Well, one of these things I know I'll be asked, but I'm already asked. I'm already asked.
Are you talking about the director?
No, I'm talking about.
When we go for a rate increase.
Rate increase, not for the directors, no. John Q's citizen, you know. Like now, my service fee's twenty-nine bucks, about a hundred and ninety-four dollars worth of water, but my service fee's twenty-nine. And I can see that going up. You know, because to pay for what we gotta pay for right here in this budget. Well, I know one of the things that I get asked, what different people make, and I'd always tell them just the base pay. And benefits are fifty percent, thirty, forty, fifty percent, right, Kevin? So you just add on it. That's just the way it is for anybody that's on benefits, you know. And so. I wasn't thinking so much about having this on the webpage. Wonder what districts have this on their webpage?
Yeah, I I would like to see.
Yeah, do any.
Actually post it.
People have it on their webpage. Who who does?
Or do they have this link on their webpage?
No, I don't know which. One source is Santa Cruz and other sources were asking people and I thought. Maybe Dustin can tell us if there's districts up here that are already have this or not.
You know, I I am not aware of any that I represent. But there may be. I I just I honestly don't know.
See, to me, this is this is basic politics. You'd be. When somebody starts screaming at you about wages, you can say, well, go look it up on the webpage. It's there. If you have any questions about it, I'm sure the staff will be able to answer you. The it's there and it's by job description and. And you can ask and the reason on this one's out of date, this is two thousand and eleven. And I'd just like to have the current. Rates and and buy just by it has it.
Next year.
How much work is it? How much work is it to put it on?
It's gonna take some formatting because everything's based on person.
How much?
We haven't gone through the full iteration of how how much, but with the new system, it'd be a lot easier than it is on the old system. Because the new system, you can actually export to Excel fairly easy and then you're gonna just have to do some formatting of that Excel program. To get rid of some of the personal data that's associated with that.
People, since it's Excel, you could have two and a half people.
That's right, exactly.
It was Lotus. It would be faster.
But it's just gonna take some formatting. I don't know.
I would use an example like the hospital.
The thing I'm worried about is.
Pretty good money.
If it's wrong.
Hospital's a private sector.
Is that gonna cause more trouble than?
If it was a county hospital.
Somewhere else.
Would have to be here.
Go to this.
Private sector. Yeah, private sector, whether it's.
Huh?
It'll take some.
The glass company or whatever it is, you don't have.
I would rather just.
Even if the glass is in the.
Put on there if you wanna know wages.
Would be on their webpage.
Put this site on there and have them go look themselves.
Would be here. I doubt it'll be on there, yeah.
It's a fair middle ground.
Yeah. Well, I when I was on the town council, it was a we weren't allowed to know what people made.
Well, that's.
But that was many years.
My own place of employment, we do not. We're not allowed to pull our checks out and go, oh, this is what I made this month.
Oh, yeah, I know.
It is just one common courtesy that we don't do because. There are people that do the exact same task, but maybe have thirty years of experience and make considerably more than a person who does the exact same job side by side. Him that has ten years' experience and that denotes how much money that he makes, but at the same time, I don't want those two people knowing.
But it seems like I remember, I don't know if it was at a confidential meeting or something, somebody was complaining that somebody else was making more money than them. And the guy didn't even take into consideration that the guy had ten more years' experience than he did.
Or probably worked ten times harder at his job.
Exactly. I worked at a place where if you told anybody what you made, you were fired immediately.
Yeah, well, that was a private sector job.
Right.
It is a private sector, but I think this is more than enough information for the general public. We are providing a link. On our website to the the information, making it thusly that much easier for them to do it.
That link would be on our website.
Do we have it on?
We can make it.
Depends on why you vote.
It depends on whether we vote for it.
We do not currently have it on. We do not, but we could put a link to this easily.
That would be very easy to do, right?
Not hard to do.
That that's very easy.
Right, generating generating direct data is gonna require Kevin's time to do that.
And I think Kevin's time is better spent in actually taking care of district business rather than providing.
Let me ask this, if if a public person were to hit the link, go see this. And then if we're in the the, you know, in a situation where we're negotiating with union or we're increasing. Proposing increased rates to our our clients. If they made a request to you, public records request, and asked for the current salaries, you would provide that, wouldn't you?
Yeah, it's a public record. I think that's what Bill was alluding to. It's four. He was only said four days.
You have a time limit. You can stretch it out. I think it's four days. I don't know what it is exactly.
It's ten days. Yeah, it doesn't matter.
I would say let's not reinvent the wheel. Give them a link to this and then for those people who want something current, just they can ask and we'll give. We give.
I agree with that. We.
Not consuming any information.
For employees' base salary or however you wanna word the thing. Link and anybody who wants to do it could do it. A lot of people won't, but that'll keep them from calling you folks.
There's many districts. There is districts also that just put their. Employee agreement.
M O U.
The M O U on them and that has salary ranges by position. And it doesn't get as specific as a person because, yes, these are by titles, but we have a lot of people in the district that have a single title.
Sure, district secretary. How many of those do we have?
The idea of it is. When we it, I'm hoping we don't have to have a price increase in water. But the politics are our community.
You're hoping?
Yeah, I got an idea I'm gonna bring up in director's comment.
Are we gonna be printing money?
It's something different.
If we talk all our vendors into not raising their prices, then maybe we can do it.
Well, at any rate. All I'm trying to I like the idea of the link. If that's all all I can get, then I'd be very satisfied with that. We need to be more transparent in this community about these things. I think what you'll find is that after a few months or a year or so goes by, the interest rate interest in it will drop. Because they'll be informed. They won't be wondering, wow, that guy's getting all that money and he'll he'll compare it. And the interesting thing about this link, they can go to whatever, you know.
Should be they want.
No, no, what's I think of it as Oroville, Wyandotte District. South Feather and look up the salaries there, which are higher than our employees.
Right.
Yeah, so it it's they can refer to all of this and if you refer to talking to them, well, go look up South Feather or go look over here. And then they can go in the same place and look it up and hopefully that will dampen the fires of people in the community that are, uh, so. That's what I'm after. I'm not after embarrassing anybody.
Do they understand these are the websites that.
Do you know what the status on A B two forty is? Because that was gonna where private water companies had to give information like this.
I don't know.
That was ethics training, wasn't it?
No.
Did that encompass?
It encompasses finances and all that stuff.
But not not at the employee level, I didn't think.
I thought it did. Or maybe it's just finances of the bus. Maybe it's just of the company. The company has to.
Well, our companies are nonprofits, so there's very strict accounting standards that they have.
Well, they're not now. Cal Water is nonprofit. It is?
They have a.
What about guy up in.
They have an approved profit.
They have a, yeah.
They have an approved profit.
But. It's P U C regulated, so they tell them what their profit could be.
Oh, okay. I didn't think it was nonprofit.
I it is a nonprofit.
My profit could be a buck. We kept five, but it could have been a buck, you know, so.
But even as a nonprofit, they do make a little money.
So. So I don't think we need. Do we need a I don't think we need a vote on this. Do we need a vote? Okay.
For direction on exactly what you want from this agenda, hold them please.
Would you make the motion?
I would.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we have the link to this, whatever it is, California State Controller's Office. And list it as wage comparative wages, interest, if you have some interest, something like that. And so that they know they can look up not just PID, because I noticed the cemetery district up here is on this list. And so everything's there.
Everything's there.
And so they can compare districts and wages and so forth. And 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 we'd be transparent and.
Do you need a title? Do you need a title?
Does that got enough, Georgia?
I'll come up with a title and you can tell me if you don't like it when we see it.
I'll second that.
Okay, you better move the second.
Any further discussion? Lauren?
I'd like to see it with some line regent that says you can go to that site, but for current for current figures, you can contact this number, which would be PID or something on that. On that page. That way the people that really wanna know know.
Looking to you. I'm looking to you that that's not too much.
Well, that's.
I don't want the phone.
That would entail responding to a public records act request, which depending on the scope of the request can be very burdensome.
I was gonna say, I don't want the phone ringing off the hook, everybody calling up and saying, hey, well, I wanted those numbers and I want those numbers. Yeah, that I don't know.
Well, the response they're gonna get is you need to come to the district and file out a public information request so we know exactly what you're asking for and we will respond accordingly. That's the answer I'll direct staff to give if you want that on there.
That'll make me happy.
Or we just put on there, if more if more data is required, contact PID office.
For more information, call PID.
Yeah, just put that in.
Well, as a saying of that motion, I would be happy to add that wordage.
Do we have a do we respond to email, contact us in the website?
We respond to it.
Don't interrupt anybody.
Depends on what they're requesting.
Well, that was what I mean. How often maybe should be my question. How often does somebody go in there and look at the? The requests that we get through contact us?
Every day.
Every day.
Because it goes to a special email account and customer service looks at it every day.
So.
How many hits on our website? Do we have every day we have people get it?
Oh, I'm sure we do.
I'm sure we do, yeah.
Looked at the report.
We have three thousand three hundred something.
It's in your packet.
Huh?
It's in the staff report.
Three thousand three hundred something, I think was on there. So is anybody in favor? Of amending the motion? To include. Verbiage that if they want more information to contact the.
I'll make an amendment to the motion that we do that.
Okay.
And I'll second that part of the amendment.
Okay, and the verbiage will be?
What George suggested. Again, I have to agree with him, but I thought that was a good answer.
Can someone mark this night down? Okay, would you read one more time?
We need a second for the amendment.
He already did. Doc did.
Sorry.
You read what.
Verbiage one more time.
The verbiage.
Well, the okay, you mean the amended motion?
Yes.
The amended what George, since he referred to that.
Okay, the amended motion would be to have a link to the State Controller's website on the district's on the district's website. And include that more information, contact PID.
Oh, George said something different than that.
What I said was how they would treat it if they got the call, which can be the official, you know, we could actually make the link say for. You know, most current information, fill out this public information request and they could print it right there and.
We could have it right on the website. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Okay, I like that verbiage better, so. Let's amend the verbiage to there. Lauren?
How about just say for for updated information, contact them and fill out this form?
It's the route of the way they're contacting that I'm concerned with. So by doing it through the form. If we have the form right on the website, then they can submit the form down here, put it in the mailbox out here, whatever it is. And then we can respond to it by then, rather than the phone ringing off the hook every time someone gets on the the website. And goes, oh, look, there's a number I can dial and I don't really have anything else to do in my life, so I'm gonna go ahead and, you know, dial this number. Where that puts, we have two service customer service reps down here that have to deal with actual water problems. So I wanna make sure that we're not overtaxing their resources in there, so. I like that final verbiage.
Are you gonna amend your the motion the third time?
Well.
The second time?
Do we just?
We can assume that was the intent of Bill's amended motion.
That's okay.
I assume that's what I was seconding.
That's assumed, exactly, okay.
Assume that's what I was seconding.
All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Passes five zero. Thank you, Director Kellogg. Okay, we already did our board recess, so we're gonna continue on.
Thought you were gonna get a recess.
We're gonna get another one. No. Treasurers memo report.
Forward the treat.
Today. Is that gonna after our recess? We're gonna have recess now or later?
Do you need another? Do we need a recess? Anybody ready for one? Are you? Do you need a recess? Okay, I'm gonna give you a four and a half minute recess till eight fifty-five. I'm gonna come back in from our recess at eight fifty-six. I think let's move through everything and let's see what we've got left. I feel after talking to George, we're gonna need probably with all the closed session items that we have. We're going to need about an hour there and quite honestly, I'm whooped, so I'm gonna. I'm gonna use. I'd like to see that we have some time for the the budget. I don't wanna cut anybody short in there and maybe we'll use up a certain amount of time and then if we have to move it to a special meeting.
I've got something under director's comments. It's gonna take a few minutes.
Okay, so there we we want to make sure we leave some time for that. So let's go on to the treasurer's report.
Okay, you have my written report. Cash right now is at four point eight million dollars. The unrestricted portion is at two point two two million. That hasn't moved very much. The unrestricted portions still remain the same as the reserve for the two thousand nine C O P and then the capacity fees. Which in the budget, you'll see those capacity fees and what they're kinda earmarked for. Debt service, we've only made one debt service payment on a, I believe it was. Um, debt service, we've only made one debt service payment on a, I believe it was the private placement, um, debt service that we've made one debt service payment this year. Um, from an operational standpoint, we're on track, uh, our water consumption revenue has been good. It's been right on what we've budgeted and the service fee obviously is right on budget. Operational expenses are right on budget and then highlights the corporation yard is in progress. Our accounting software conversion is complete. The conversion's complete. We still have working some bugs out, but overall the software is in place, it's being used, it's efficient. There's some little bit quirks here and there, but the service that we're getting from the software company has been outstanding. So I, if you remember when they did, uh, come in and pitch their software and they talked about how their customer service was top notch, they're proving it. And every time that we've had to make a customer or a call to the service department, it's been handled quickly and efficiently and so, um, nothing but, but top, top ranking on the customer service. When you, when you do a software conversion, you're gonna have quirks. And so some of the things have been, some of the payroll issues have been off, so we had to make some corrections doing that. Um, we're trying to communicate that the best we can to the employees that, you know, this is just a quirk in the system and that we're making the correction and we're getting it done quickly. There's been some billing, billing issues that we've worked through. Um, and we're trying to communicate that best to the, to the customers out there that it's just a new billing system and that it's gonna be more efficient and, but as.
Where were those?
Things through, there might be a few little pickups in our giddy up type thing, so. But overall, the full page billing has been, uh, went out to all customers this month. And with that full page billing was a full page stuffer and that had a front and back on it.
You have a physical copy here?
Uh, no, but we can give you a, uh.
Copy of it.
Yeah, I saw it there. I just wanted to see what quality it was, what it looks like, the paper.
You didn't get one?
I don't look at my bills.
You don't look at your bills?
Oh, I have my daughter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's a director, doesn't he get free water?
Free water, yeah, right.
Don't you remember?
Yeah, we get free water, yeah.
Pretty sure we.
Trevor's writing that down.
According to the public.
Larry said.
Yeah, we get free water, nobody knows that.
Um, did anybody receive it in their bill? I don't.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, was.
How'd it look? Looked exactly like that.
Yeah, and it, and it tried to get, we tried to give the customers information on how to read their bill because that was one of the first things that people came in, what's going on, how to read my bill, what's this? So we gave them that information in there. And then we also highlighted, what you've already seen was, uh, Bill Taylor. And then we gave a nice big, uh, water tour.
Yeah, advertisement, yeah.
I liked right next to that, the.
Free lunch.
The recycling process water.
That's right.
I heard a customer come in today that commented that they liked that we full page.
We've gotten a lot of positive comments about the full page billing. The other thing that we've gotten a lot of positive comments was that if you have multiple accounts, then they're all coming in one envelope.
Bill, yeah.
Great.
I, I do have a complaint from a customer.
Yeah.
He, he gets five bills or, I didn't know the church had five meters and he's the general manager or the, the, in charge of the management of our church. And, and his complaint has to do with the little scissors. He wanted it serrated. He says, I have to go with a pair of scissors and cut this off. He says, why don't you have it serrated?
Perforated?
Perforated, yeah. That's his complaint.
That's good. Log that.
If you take your fingernail and you go like this, cause if you notice, it is on the seat.
Now I'll tell him to call you and you're gonna tell him how to handle this little problem.
Comes right off.
So he calls you.
No, you, when he calls, you're telling, telling we have a four hour class showing, showing how to tear that off.
Preparation bending and tear off. I think it looked very nice. That was excellent, that was an excellent stuffer that was in there, great article about Bill in there.
Well, I particularly like this article about letting people know where we're spending such a big hit of money and why we're having to do it. And any type of further communication and advertising messages like that will diffuse the, the folks from coming in and saying, well, why are you spending all of this money?
Right.
Yeah, compliments to Cedar Creek. She, she put this together, she did a great job, she named our newsletter.
Oh.
Water talk.
Water talk.
Well, what did this cost us? How much it paid?
This one was.
Oh, how much, how much did the billing people charge us?
It's one cent per stuff.
And then what did we, we paid Cedar to draw it up?
Cedar.
Yeah, it was in the low hundreds, I think.
Low hundreds?
And Cedar printed it.
There was two things going on, so.
I saw a bill, there was a bill in there that I put, I marked to talk about.
Okay, that might tell you.
Cedar printed it.
I thought that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure.
And drop shipped it to them, so InfoSend did not print this one.
I, I, I went by Cedar Creek today to talk to him about the community relations, not public relations anymore, but meeting. And, cause they have the report virtually done for that now that they're back from their family problems. And she was quite proud of this and told me how much they did and everything. So Tanya was, uh, very good about it.
No, it's, I, it's really nice.
Says right on here, your bill now includes a windowed envelope and a matching tear off section.
Tear off doesn't say tear off.
In parentheses, it says see George for direct.
Well, no, right, no, right below that is Director Kellogg's cell phone number. For, for scissor usage.
Yeah, if you wanna rent some, we oughta rent scissors out.
Well, back to business, I move to accept the treasurer's memo report as presented.
Yeah, I'll second.
I had a question. Why is Skyway Pipeline still in progress?
Cause we're doing the services. I, I don't know if you.
Oh, I thought they were done.
We're doing back, back of the curb stuff still, we're doing the street.
Okay. In preparation for the.
Micro surface.
Micro thing, will we even know? Will we even know that it's there?
Yeah.
It means a non-thick surface.
I hope they don't use our water.
It's a word for a thin seal coat.
Make sure we don't let them use our water.
What are you talking about?
They're gonna put slurry on the, the road, basically.
So it's not gonna smooth out those nasty ridges that they put in there.
Call for, any, was there any other comments? Public, anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Didn't I vote to say no last month?
Yeah, just to be different.
One month you did.
Yeah, I don't think I approved your report last.
I would like still to note this night because I think this is the most consistent voting I've seen so far, so. We're gonna start with the July check register. I am gonna start with, um, Director Kellogg.
I didn't take the time to go through all the checks. I have two things that I wanted to bring up. One is on George's discretionary five thousand dollars. I would like to see it listed on these pages where he spent the money and for what. So what and where on George's five thousand dollar discretionary money that he has.
Expenditure money.
Expenditure money that he has control of.
Don't we see?
I didn't, I didn't understand, Bill.
You mean under five?
Under five, five thousand or less, yeah.
That's what I, but we do see that.
Everything that's less than five thousand?
I just, I just, I just want it listed, that's all.
Is everything that.
It's everything that's under five thousand.
That is not related to operating and maintaining the water system.
Right.
Okay.
It's mostly, it'd be easier to list the ones that aren't.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question. I wanna know. I don't know. So, and the other question is, uh, we changed partially, not completely, our retirement benefit thing. And it's been changed for a time enough, we could see the performance against ICMA and the people that have the rest of the retirement package. So I'm curious to see what kind of returns have come from both sides.
Is this, is this a check approval thing or are these director comments?
No, this is not director's comment. This is about the expense report and where we spend our money. And enlisted in it is ICMA. I.
Yeah, but you're, you're, you're now asking for action instead of asking questions about.
Yeah, I'm asking questions that result in actions, yeah. So any rate.
I can respond to the retirement.
Well, retirement, has it even?
Retirement still?
They, the, just to let you know, the retirement plan, uh, performance is all directed by individuals and those individuals, I can't disclose where their, where their money is, is, is at.
No, I'm just curious, not by individuals, but by percentages and return.
But the, uh, the other thing too is that the monies just started, just went over to the FTJ.
Oh, just went over to the other firm?
Yeah, and so the, uh, the, all the monies in the past have been going through ICMA. Just to let you know too, that ICMA had, did not release the funds that were included in the plus fund, so there's approximately one point six million dollars still with ICMA and that will be with them until May of next year. And that is again through the discretion of the, each individual on where they wanted to keep that, those funds.
No, I understood it was individual's discretion, which retirement thing they kept with. I thought maybe we'd have some sort of performance idea with the two different ones, but obviously we don't.
I think a better question would be, are the employees happy with?
Yeah, and I can give you a, a report on the performance of Rick Moots. He's been nothing but great. He's, uh, he's been over here every time that's needed. He's went through, um, with each, all, actually the two, two departments, administration and water treatment. He's went up and showed them the website, walked them through the website and has now made an appointment with the treatment or, uh, transportation and distribution department to go through it with them also. Um, but he's, every time he's been called upon, from our standpoint, he's been there and has done his best. So, um, I have nothing but high regards for, for his performance at this point. But just to let you know, the money is just transferred to FTJ Fund Choice and that, um, now we're gonna start moving forward with it.
Okay, I thank you for the report.
Have you had any complaints?
Uh, no, no. Uh, the only complaint was, is when he was doing his demonstration that there was a little glitches in the website because he was working off another website and they. It's not his, yeah, it's not his fault, but if someone logged in on the demo, then he got kicked off. And when he logged into the demo, he kicked the other person off. That was really the only complaint. But from, from that standpoint, no, it's, everybody's been, been happy. Everybody that's met with him individually, I have nothing but high regards for him and, and what, what he's done for them, so.
Thank you, Director Kellogg. Thank you, Kevin, for that report.
But I can answer any questions on the checks, so.
On there. Director Hunt?
Uh, yeah, I have a few questions. On iPad, page two twenty-four, you've got a nice highlighted area there in, in yellow. Why are you listing the IRS as an unusual payment?
It's not unusual, but it's different than last year. So I wanted to make sure that I put that on there because the check register looks a lot higher, but it's, there, there's not really.
Right, I knew, I, I thought I knew what the answer was, but I saw.
That's why, that's why I stuck it on there, just because I wanted to make sure that, that identified the differences between last year and this year. And the reason why is because we weren't paying the IRS out of the check register last year and now we are, based on the new system, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, on iPad, page two twenty-seven, Butte County Treasurer for LAFCO operating expenses. That's our membership cost?
Yeah.
It's less than last year. It's less than last year, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah, they went down. You can thank me for that.
Do we get five thousand dollars worth of benefit out of them?
We don't have a choice.
Don't have a choice. It's required by state law.
Then we do.
No, you don't.
Okay, and I already got my answer on Chico Catering Company. But just so people know, um, needless to say, Paradise Irrigation District was not supposed to pay for the Butte County Special District's, uh, meeting, the catering expenses, et cetera. But in the, uh, in the battle of getting all this put together, we signed the contract with them and everything was done. So we paid and then will be refunded from Butte County Special Districts.
Okay, was that it?
Nope.
Okay.
On page iPad, page two thirty-one, um, Northern California Water Association, and it says Northern California Water Association dash legal. And I'd just like to know what that is.
How was it, you agreed to, um, join NACWA in evaluating, um, issues surrounding the Bay Delta? And we paid our pro-rata share while we finally got billed for it.
Okay, thank you. And that was all. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Director Hunt. Director Flesher?
I really don't have anything on this.
On the check register?
Fine.
Director Duncan?
Okay, he got half of mine, Ken did. Okay, uh, the first one was, um, LAFCO, which I knew what it was, but I was gonna bring it up. The other, on the same page, two twenty-seven, um, there's the Cedar Creek. Uh, how much is it? Thousand thirty-seven, thirty-eight?
Those are for, we, we ran out of those parking, uh, envelopes. And so we did go out for an RFP on that and Cedar Creek came back and actually redesigned the parking pass envelope. And so there's a, they put a perforated tear off on there so you can stick it on your windshield.
Got our, we got our perforation there. We did, we got our perforation there.
We could've saved money if George helped design.
Tell the minister to go up there.
No, it isn't a minister, he's, and he had to.
The other thing too is they put a little, uh, on the backside of that, they put a little, um, advertisement for Paradise Lake website. So to kind of attract people to the website.
So that was, that was lake then, okay. Okay, next one was, um, on page, um, two twenty-eight, pre-employment, uh, who's it from?
Pre-employment.
Employment Relations Network. Pre-employment, uh, what was that?
Blood test, stress test.
Do we employ somebody?
Yes, we actually, um, brought back a past PID utility worker.
I know who it is, okay. Okay, uh, let's see, page, uh, pull here on, um, on page two twenty-nine, to, um, InfraSource.
Infosource? InfoSend?
InfoSend, yeah. Hosted deposit.
Yeah, that's, that's our, um, that's who's doing our outsourcing of our billings. And so part of the cost associated with the billing is postage. And so the requirement was, would we put a postage deposit down so they weren't fronting our postage on that?
Oh, okay, that hasn't, that's not the.
Lasts for a while.
It's an live number.
That lasts for a while.
Why didn't they say, give me an eight thousand dollar deposit?
Is that visible by forty-six cents or whatever the postage is?
Or is that, or is that the approximate divided by twelve? Do they, do we do a year's worth of?
It's two, two months.
That's two months?
It's not a year's worth of postage.
Can I get twelve months out of there? And, no, we're like, wow, can we add a one to that too?
Okay, um, the other, the next one was, um, with, on the same page, inland business system.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Office equipment.
That's our copier.
Oh, okay. I don't, I, oh, I know why. I didn't mean to, my line went down. Okay, the next one was, um, oh, that was the lawyers, we already got that one. And let's see, the next, oh, the, there's two of them. There's two, you call them fire hydrant meters.
Oh, you son of a gun, I thought you passed that up.
What is that?
National meter.
On page two thirty?
Yeah, what that is, is that's for our construct, for construction meters.
Yeah.
Construction has been very busy, so we didn't have enough. We needed more inventory.
Oh, so you bought two more?
So a contractor pays a deposit on that meter and then they pay usage as they fill their water trucks.
Oh.
It also contains backflow device.
Oh, so it is a meter, okay. I thought it was a hydrant.
You're in charge of how much water, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and we needed two of them.
I like the one that was not being used down the lower part of town on that particular truck.
Okay, and he got, he got the one on the legal. Okay, one last, okay.
Actually had one where we don't, um, we, we try to verify whether you're using it. So if they take water for a construction process, project out of the district, they're not supposed to be using our meter for that, just an FYI.
Okay.
We had one today that we canceled.
They were taking the water out of the district?
Yes, they were using it on a project that was not.
Was not in the district?
Yes.
So what did you do?
We told them we need our meter back and we, we have the deposit. We told them, we need our meter back, and we, we have the deposit, so we'll take out whatever they owe, and they need to find their water elsewhere.
We're not gonna find them for you taking it out of the district?
No.
No penalty, okay.
They pay for the water, in fact, they pay quite a bit, it's two dollars and twelve cents a unit, I think.
Who was it from?
Construction water.
From where?
Well, that's what we feed, that's what we pay.
Oh, that's what you charge?
Yeah.
But what, what, where did they get the other water from?
Well, I don't know where they're going.
Oh, they maybe was cheaper.
Public project or a private building study, you know?
I don't know.
Private, yeah. Okay, the next one is the last one, Tri Counties Bank. Page two thirty-three. I noticed an awful lot of office supplies being bought with the credit card. It doesn't say where they're being bought. Are they still being bought, like at the depot and those?
Most of the office supplies that we buy are through Office Depot.
Office Depot, okay. You see, that's the bad thing about the credit card, is it doesn't tell you who the vendor is.
That's true.
Will anyone do that?
Uh, it'll do it on the statement, but I don't think when we pay it, it probably, it would probably just be through the Cal card.
Right, now the other thing, I really, this is new, isn't it? The account summary?
Yep.
I really like that.
That's new, that's, well, it's been there since the new system.
Oh, I hadn't noticed it before.
The new system puts an account summary on all.
Okay, why are there more than one office, there's more than one account?
Uh, probably multiple departments.
Say, say the treatment plan.
I'll give you a little, if you, if you look at, let's look at the bottom, the very bottom on page two thirty-four.
Uh-huh.
It says zero one, that's the general fund.
Oh, okay.
The next number is forty, that means, that's Department Forty, which is Transportation and Distribution. And then the next number is the, actually, the account number.
How much trouble would it be to put the department numbers on this, so we could see that?
Just put a legend.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Zero one forty is, da-da-da-da. Well, those would be, you, you, you wanna know the last five, six digits?
Send you a legend on your iPad and you could refer to it.
Yeah. I can tell you what.
How many are there in there?
There's, there's only five. Ten is sources supply, fifteen's recreation, thirty is water treatment.
Oh, you passed twenty-one.
Forty is T and D, fifty's customer service, and sixty is administration.
So why can't you just put it at the bottom of this?
Because this is like a canned report, I can't go in there and.
Oh, it's canned, okay.
It's just a straight print.
Okay, very good. That's all I have.
Seems to me like you could just.
For leaving me nothing. Thought I had that on three meters there, okay, so no, actually.
You could type that up on a piece of blank paper and just add it before this. The legend.
Two twenty-seven? That's all we can ask. Glasgow, that's the final payment, page two twenty-seven.
Sorry.
Glasgow. It's okay. Don't worry about what I got.
That was the final payment before retention.
Like it.
Eight thousand dollars?
That was the settlement before retention, so you will see a retention release. That was your.
How much did they want?
Yes.
That was your eight thousand that you took.
How much did they want, though, and we?
The what?
How much did we save? If they wanted to bill us more than eight thousand?
Well, you guys were trying to agree on a number, and you guys.
Increased it, and it was very close to whether they were going to court or not.
Right, I know. Just, Ken.
Yeah.
So you got it, Ken, you picked the right number.
Jim was saying twelve.
Okay.
They agreed down to eight at the board meeting.
Okay, two twenty-nine was Infocend, and he answered that one, and, come on, let's move. And Larry got at the top of, bottom of two thirty, two thirty-one, the hydrant meters. Thought no one would see that up there and down there. And that was it.
The meter is what threw me.
And I think that was it for me. Okay, so, motion, please.
I move we approve the July checks as stated in the agenda.
All second? All in favor, say aye.
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 So approved. Okay, gentlemen, we have about hours' worth of, of.
Stuff.
Uh, well, yes, stuff, closed session. And I'm gonna say that Director Kellogg has about twenty minutes, I was going to guess.
That's more than enough.
Okay, word of stuff. So that theoretically puts us real close to about eleven o'clock. Do we want to try to do the budget tonight, or do we wanna put it off to a separate?
You presented that real well.
I'm not gonna sugarcoat it at all.
It sounds like to me a different meeting.
I, I think we need a special meeting.
Well, if you guys wanna try to go through it, I'm, I'm all for it. I would rather get it done, get these guys on the road to what they need to do, but.
You're not gonna hold us up if you push it to a special meeting.
Okay, so, and if we did, I'm leaving for vacation, so it's either going to happen the twenty-seventh at like four PM would be my thought.
We should pick the time right now while we got all five people here.
That's what I'm saying, and, but I'm looking towards you guys, is there, Dustin, I don't think you have to be there for the budget.
I don't know.
Oh, I'm leaving the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, it's not something, you're leaving the twenty-seventh?
That's when we go to the Cal LAFCO.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna do it without Larry.
Yep.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Why don't we do it on a Monday, like twenty-sixth?
Monday the twenty-sixth.
I could do that.
Gotta be in Yuba City, gotta be in Williams and in Willows. Or Tuesday. Well, you said Tuesday's the twenty-seventh.
Oh, Tuesday's the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, time flies.
When am I leaving? Oh, I think I'm leaving Wednesday, I'm wrong then.
You're leaving.
I, I thought you were doing it Wednesday. I'm leaving on Wednesday.
Tuesday's bad for me.
Wednesday's the twenty-eighth.
Oh, okay.
Tuesday's bad for me. Monday would be better.
You're not here.
Tuesday's bad for you?
Yeah.
Monday would be better.
Golf day?
Golf day.
It's not.
Monday would be better for me, Ken, probably.
Monday the twenty-sixth gives us plenty of time for notification.
That's right.
Twenty-four hours.
Yep. Is there anybody, four PM?
I can't make it to four. I have, I have class on that day.
Okay, tell.
Five.
Five? How many hours, what do we think this is gonna take? Three?
Two.
Two hours?
I think we can do it in thirty seconds.
I agree with that too.
But I'm gonna make a motion to approve it right now, because, yeah, if we can do it in thirty seconds, then someone speak the words. So.
Two hours.
But I can do that in thirty seconds, isn't that one of those games?
Is everybody okay with Monday the twenty-sixth at five PM?
Well, you're, you're busy until five, right?
Five thirty?
Five thirty would be five.
Monday the twenty-sixth.
How about you?
At five thirty, is that work for everybody?
Yes.
I, I honestly don't know. I know during the day what I'm doing, but the evening sounds like it's open.
Okay.
I'm trying to do two things right.
I'll buy you McDonald's.
You'll buy me my dinner?
I'll buy you McDonald's if you show up at five thirty.
Five thirty.
Well, why don't we meet at McDonald's? We'll eat, entertain the whole town.
We'll eat on it and vote on it.
I'll be covered in dust, but that's all right.
Can we get our resident chef to just cook us up something for that night?
A resident chef?
What could he barbecue for us out there? Okay, we are gonna move.
If you pay your fees, we'll feed you well.
We are gonna move item eight-eight of new business.
George, there was no comments on that.
No, there wasn't.
Item eight-eight of new business to Monday the twenty-sixth at five thirty PM.
Perfect.
Do not exceed seven thirty PM.
Five thirty to seven.
What is that, August the?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
By the twenty-eighth, yes, I will be gone too.
No, we'll see.
Okay, so, at this time, we're going to move into closed session, right? We've covered everything?
No.
Director's comments, thank you.
Directors are before closed session.
I'm sorry, yes, I was trying to find the right page. Director's comments, I am gonna start with Director Duncan.
Okay, I went to a energy seminar, and they mentioned that they have faucet, a lot, shower faucets that Cal, Cal, California gives away. It saves water. They say it's.
Cal water?
Yeah, not Cal water, it's a California outfit. But he, they said that if I told you about it, you'd probably know, know where to look. But it's a shower head, that they call it a forty, forty-nine dollar shower head. Because it only, it.
Forty-nine dollars of water.
It reduces the energy to only cost forty-nine dollars for hot water. Because it puts air into it, and you, you feel like you're using more water, but you really aren't. So you save on your energy, plus you save on your water.
It must be the shower head I used at the ocean last time, that thing just, all it did was and it was like, it was like, there's water coming out of this, there's, there's a ton of air coming out along with it, but you know, it was really, it was like a mister. It was like a high-pressure mister.
You feel that you are really getting a, a good shower, and yet you're saving water and energy.
You're not really.
And they give it, but they sell it for fifty dollars. This energy place sells it for fifty dollars.
Let's find, let's, let's Google the fifty, let's Google the fifty-dollar shower head and see who comes up with the previous. That would be really great for a water conservation program, if we could offer something that we had that.
Well, I asked him, can we buy it from you? And they said, who's it going to, a government? Well, then it'll be a hundred dollars.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, prevailing wage to drive.
But then they said that Cal, somebody gives it away. So they might have a good source to buy them.
Well, that's, that's good, because that would be good to look into.
That was my comment.
Okay. Director Flesher? Saving the best for last.
I was rounding the yard a couple of weeks, a week ago or whatever it was, looking at this conforization project, and I was walking on the sidewalks different places, and I just wanted to compliment the crew that we have, because their concrete work is very professional. And there's a couple of honeycombs in some of the retaining walls that I'm sure they're gonna get a little later. The finish on their sidewalks and the curving is professional, it really looks good.
Who's doing that? The dream.
Big Jim and Pat.
Yeah, mixed up our guys, and then we've got a couple licensed contractors on hourly.
Well, I think all the sidewalks that we were walking onto, our guard crew is done, right? Jim and Pat?
Yep.
Very good.
Made sure we're up to slope. That was it? Thank you Director Flesher, Director Hunt?
No comments.
And I would less like to say, I was up, like I said, I was up at the lake, and the, the grounds at the lake are so meticulously kept up, it's just great to see. I don't sound, anybody couldn't go up there and say, if they'd been there ten years ago and look at it today, and say, wow, what a vast difference in there, the picnic spots, everything that's up there. I would've sure liked to seen more people, it was a relatively cool evening, it was that week, we were having the real nice temperatures. I really expected to see more people up there, and there was only a couple people up in the, the park area there, so I really would've liked to have seen more people up there, but.
How late does it stay open?
That goes till dark, dark, right?
So dark.
Yeah, and I was up there s- six-thirty, something like that, but it would've been a perfect time, it was just beautiful out there, birds, and it was just gorgeous, so. They're doing a really great job up there.
Last night was the blue moon, and it was light all night.
Yeah, full moon.
Yeah. It was light, it was light all night, huh? Could've just stayed out there and kept partying, huh? Um, but no, very good job on, on taking care of the grounds, the corporate yard looks great, they've been doing a great job over there. So I just wanted to thank all the staff members that have been doing that, that's great. And the guys have been doing a real good job down on Skyway, I mean, things, I know that's right in the middle of rush hour time and traffic, and I don't think we've had any injuries or anything like that, or close calls. The guys seem very conscientious, every time I've gone by, I'm looking to see if somebody's watching kind of their surroundings, what's going on. And there's always somebody watching, just eyes up on the road. And that's really important, especially at the hours these guys are working at, to have some eyes up and see what it is, so. All that clicking and popping, and the answer was zero.
After I cleared it.
That was the end of my director's comment. Director Kellogg, sounds like you have something on your mind you wanna get to?
Yeah, I have two things. First is a community relations meeting, and they said they'll have the things, and we talked about having it at four o'clock in the afternoon on either the Tuesday the twenty-seventh, Wednesday the twenty-eighth, and Thursday the twenty-ninth.
This is through the public relations?
Yeah, the public relations is now a community relations, or something close to that. So basically, the question goes to George and Ken. Because they have the report, they are actually thinking about bringing it tonight, and I said, no, no, we got too many things on the agenda. It needs to go to the committee first. So they wanna have a committee meeting the first of next week, because they're all raring to go at.
Cedar Creek?
Cedar Creek, yeah. So, any rate, there's the, the dates and the timeframe for that, so. The twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth at four o'clock, four PM. So, need the feedback from George and Ken, if there's, you can make those date, whatever one. Then I'll do my other thing, I'll go up, like I like to do, up to the podium to do this.
Do you get points for speaking from the?
No, I practice, you know, I go to Toastmasters once.
Toastmasters?
Yeah, we had a humorous speech contest today.
Oh.
I came in third out of thirty.
George, for me, the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth would both work.
Okay.
Not the twenty-ninth.
Well, we're, oh, I'm trying to figure out the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
When we were, Doug and I went up and visited with Jim and Bill again, and we talked about many things. And one of the things that came, Doug didn't hear it, I heard it, it was that when our water goes, and I, I wish Jim would've stayed around, but he got out of here before I could talk to him. That when the water hits the lake, or reservoir, it is, when they test it there, which now has been, I've been asking for this, and they got it. And it qualifies to meet the regs, that we can't meet out of the end of the pipe that comes down. Because the testing place right now is the end of the pipe as it enters the lake. And that's where we fail to meet the standards. So I went home, and I was thinking, and I woke up in the middle of the night on Sunday, and I thought of the term wetlands, because I remembered a test that was down, done at Davis testing water and how to clean it up using wetlands. And they made an artificial wetland, and they cleaned up water. And this was looking at agricultural use for salts and other things, so. So then I got on the internet and got different things. And one of the first things I ran across, this is in Delaware State, and they say natural wastewater treatment systems. And these are designed for sewage, well, our problem is not like sewage, it's much less. And what they have done, all over the country to a certain extent, is they've developed either artificial or natural wetlands to treat water. And the water has met standards and cleaned chemicals out of it. And the question that I was looking for here, I'll give this to George after the meeting, is conclusions down here. One reason for this lack of knowledge about these, the systems, how they function, their performance and costs, causing decision makers to choose the traditional off-the-shelf system and avoid the unfamiliar. Other words, we're choosing the engineering system that's off-the-shelf, it's conventional, and everybody understands that. If you work, where do you wanna put the different devices and how you wanna do it? This thing is out of the box, it's different, but it is grown to be used all over the nation. So I wanted to get somebody in California, and here's Irwin Ranch Water District in Southern California that uses, they call it natural process, but a wetlands to clean up their water. And it's meeting, it goes back into a river, and it's meeting all, at least when this was put out, met all the tests by the state and the feds to be, have quality water. So with that in mind, Monday afternoon, I went up to Megalia Reservoir. And what I was looking for, because Megalia is a living reservoir, because of the way we manage it. Paradise Lake is not. Whenever Paradise Lakes goes down, you see tree stumps, rocks, and bare earth. When, since Megalia hasn't been lowered more than a certain deal, except for storm events that'll go up, but we have to, by the rules that we're forced to live with, keep it at a certain height, and then we pump some water out of it, but not a great deal. It is a wetlands. Around the edge that I walked on the side, if you're looking at the map on the wall, it's on the side Seth's sitting. And along that side, if you go up about a quarter of mile or so, you'll find yourself looking at wetlands, because the water is shallow there, and there's all sorts of things growing in the water, in the bottom of the, of the reservoir. There's all water-loving plants, trees, grasses, shrubs along that border. The little shells I gave you are from the Megalia Reservoir, you won't find them up at Paradise Lake, and they're, what would you think they are? They're, they're freshwater clams.
Clams?
Yeah. What does a clam do very efficiently? Is it processes chemicals and other things and converts them back, the natural process. So, also the watershed, so the question I have, and this is for Dustin, is that can we look into the proposition that we could actually get the water control people, that California Board that's so quick to find people, to look at our Megalia Reservoir as a natural wetlands? And thereby use it for where we test the water? In other words, we don't test at the end of the pipe, we test the reservoir, and the reservoir leaks underneath, and we let water off during the winter. But if it meets all the qualifications that we're presently trying to spend seven to eight million dollars on, which I have no problem with that, but when I came across this, I thought, jeez, we've gotta look into this. I, I, you know, have Dustin look at the rules and so forth, George do whatever he needs to do, but check into this wetland proposition where we could use Megalia Reservoir. And in the years to come, when we build a new dam up there, hopefully, we've got a lot of hurdles to get through before we do that, is that we could say, this is a temporary wetlands, or we could say, when we build a dam a quarter of a mile above the old one, wherever it would go, that the area between the new dam and the old dam be held back as a wetland. And, and a managed wetland for water processing. It, it's not revolutionary, it's not that, it is just very strange. And part of the thing I, I thought about was add our water settlement ponds, I don't know where the, the, the pipe goes. Which pond does it come out of, George? The pipe at the...
It comes out of both.
Both of them down to the lake?
Depending on which one we're using.
So the idea I had there was that it, you gun eye to, oh, I don't know how wide, 'cause I'm not an engineer, but a wide area, say six, eight, ten feet, you put rocks in it, and you run the water over that. Now, that, that's called oxygenation, it is also a way of cleaning up water. So you run it down that hill, how far depends on which pond it would come out of, and this does not preclude us from investing over two million dollars in new settlement ponds that are concrete lined and all that. What it precludes us is being forced to invest all these millions of dollars to meet the regulations of water quality. So, that's my great brilliant idea, and I had fun with the shells, came by George's office and said, I got to show you something here, and I gave him a shell, and I said, I'll see you Wednesday, and this will save you seven to eight million dollars. Any rate, that's the idea.
No, you said we still spend two million, so we're only saving...
That's the idea, it's worked at other places, and they're doing sewage, which is much harder than, than water.
How do clams get in there?
Huh?
How do clams get in there?
I don't know, Larry, they've been there for a long time.
They've been there forever since I was a kid.
Well, I can point out a couple things, just that you may not be aware. You might not either, Bill, but this is an old picture, but when this reservoir was dropped, they actually did have to create a wetlands in district forces. Worked with the regulatory agencies, and we actually built, so when you look across, as you walk up here, you look across where all the trees are going, that section right there was actually built by us as a wetland.
Oh, okay.
And...
It's a little farther from where we dropped the water, but it's connected to the same bit.
Not that I've ever rode my motorcycle there or anything like that.
I, you know, Dustin will be able to determine whether you can reclassify that, that might be tough, but you, you may be able to create a wetland, I don't know if it will...
Is the testing not at the pipe and not in...
Yeah, the testing is, my understanding is it's at, it's at the point source.
And upstream and downstream.
Yeah, which, uh, point source is typically the pipe, the end of the pipe, so, you know, one of the... Don't, don't let me be a Debbie Downer, Bill, I, I think it's worth looking at, uh, definitely.
Well, I, I expect a lot of questions and downers, but if it, if it work, it'd be worth it.
I, I could see the regulatory agencies saying, hey, you're, you're in the channel here, you can't turn this into a wetland and discharge into it and just reclassify it as a, a wetland area, you're, you're still discharging from a point source into an area, and that, you still need a permit for that. So, what I suspect, I don't know, this is just purely speculation on my part, but I suspect what these folks are doing, these other entities that you found, is they're discharging out of the jurisdictional area, so they're not discharging into the Bed Banker Creek or reservoir.
The water coming out of the Irwin Ranch one goes into a, a river, uh...
But where's their wetland?
Their wetland is...
Wetland outside of the Bed Banker Channel?
The river, but you start using your imagination a little bit, if you're saying the channel and so forth, there's no reason you can't construct a wetland below the pipe and put in a, you know, bank and, and run, you know, do something different, start, still have to spend money on engineering, but you could actually sort of make the thing work, depending on the kind of reply you get from those people.
Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to make, is I suspect that there's a discharge outside the Bed Banker Channel into a wetland, artificial created.
Well, it's, whatever it is, you can, you, if you start looking on the internet for wetlands to use for sewage or water, and I went to the ones in California, but there's quite a few, and they're all over the United States, some of them in California, one of them is a two-hundred-and-fifty acre wetland, artificially man-made, and that's where a sewage system, uh...
Did you say Irvine Ranch?
Irvine Ranch, it's right there, what I gave.
You said Irwin or Irvine?
Irvine? Irwin Ranch.
Well, let George read it, so he can tell you.
Is it Orange County?
Yeah, it's in Orange County, yeah. It's actually the...
Irvine Ranch.
Irvine, yeah.
Yeah, they own a great deal of land below the marine bays, and they're developing it into homes and stuff, so they have their own sewage plant. They also own land on, uh, on the road that comes up out of the San Joaquin Valley, uh, up there.
There, the reason I, I have a, I've met their GM, nice guy, knowledgeable guy, I've worked with them on water transfers before, so, um...
Well, this is where I'm hoping your contacts, you can find out the legalities of it and what we can or can't do, and, and the worst thing I figure they can do to us is say no.
What, how big of...
It's a great, it's a great idea, because...
How big of a area would you need for a wetland?
Depends on, we, we don't know, no, 'cause they, they go all the way from very small ones, one of the articles talks about a guy taking somebody out to a city park and said, there's our wetland. And somehow they've engineered it, done it for people can use it as a park, and the, the water's clean enough that that's where they can dispose of it, so.
Are those, does it go uphill from the ponds or down? If you go along the lake, uh, the, the reservoir?
Does what go uphill?
The land.
Goes uphill.
Goes uphill by much?
If you remember way back, we talked about other options and didn't find a viable one, maybe if you incorporate this idea, it would work, but, um, the golf course we did was not doable, 'cause it has too much of a direct runoff into, uh, creek channels. But we did talk about pumping it up to Parks and Rec property on Coodallink, Coodallink Park, um, which is kinda off on its own, you know, potentially you could pump it all up there and create a wetland. We did talk about that, um, early on.
'Cause then the water, as it settles, would not come back into Megalia Reservoir. It doesn't go into the reservoir directly. Right, is what you're saying.
But you have to...
But it's also lost water.
But yeah, you don't gain any.
No, you don't, there's no conservation water in this, you just get out of having to build this six or s- eight million dollar
Yeah, or not.
addition to our water treatment plan.
Do they need water up there?
No.
No.
I was thinking we could sell it to the rec district.
You'd be creating something for them to
Culture.
build off of and turn into a park.
I was just thinking we could pump it up there and charge them for it, get our money for the water, and then they could use it.
Sure they'd sign right up for that.
Right. That's a highly used park up there, yeah.
Well, you, it's, as dear as water is...
I think that's a, I think that's a, a good idea and something to look into. I think that's...
I think it's far-fetched, but I think it's a good thing to look into.
Well, it has been done, um, a client of my firm's, Exchange Contractors, they're in the San Joaquin Valley. They are downslope from Lessland's Water District and, and a number of other entities, and what happens is they apply water to those up-slope lands, and it leaches all, it's horrible pollution, it's really polluted water. And it, it leaches the upslope, uh, lands, and then this water, groundwater flows downslope to my client's lands. One of the things they've done is the grassland bypass project, which is a big, they've created this big grassland area where it's kind of a marshy area, it's natural filtration, and then that dumps them back into the San Joaquin River. It's not, it's not a perfect solution, uh, from the regulator's perspective, but they've so far agreed to it. So it, it has been done, I, 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 we have some familiarity with, with the concept.
But, yeah, the, the key, key things is figuring out if it's an effective treatment for aluminum and dichlorobromemethane.
It doesn't, but so far, what I picked up, that's what I've sent.
Fortino's, what's his closest well?
Oh, his wells are on others, other side of the drainage.
Pump it to his wells and get rid of it.
Oh, jeez, I'd charge you for it.
Hopefully someday we can buy it for Tina.
One of those spaghetti lines up there, and I'll never know. Okay, thank you all for your comments, um, at this time, we are going to, going to closed session for a real property, oh, actually, the real property negotiations we're doing out of closed session.
No, that's just an announcement.
Am I?
It's an announcement.
Yeah.
Okay, then yes.
Gives a public a opportunity.
Okay, we're going to real property negotiations, uh, with the district manager, so...
Yes, if the public wants to come on.
Is there any public comment on that? At this time, turn ourselves into the other room.
Uh, Ken, which day did you wanna have the meeting on?
I'm, I'm available, whatever I set, Tuesday or Wednesday, not Thursday, George is gonna check his calendar.
Oh, okay, then let me know right away before I can let Tanya...